That's okay with you, no? Right? Agenda reviewed isn't have to add anything and move things around. We did add two items to non-public a couple hours ago, one related to contract, the other related to a personnel issue. We're going to go for the brief public hearing regarding this donation before we get to the regular board meeting. Lauren, you want to walk us through this off?
Yes, so in in our budget process, our music department, which includes our general music teacher, Ms. Emma Marino, along with our band teacher, thank goodness, and then our strings teacher, Nick Sanoni, had some ideas about how to pique interest in instruments that we currently don't offer to students, while also expanding the current program that we have in general music as well as band and strings. In the process of normal budgeting, we told people, dream big, think about those things, be ready to defend them, and then also think about potentially other funding sources. And just with that, one cue, as the music department went over their hopes and dreams, they noticed that their hopes and dreams had a pretty large dollar sign next to it. So they all on their own pursued some alternate funding for their hopes and dreams for the music department, which they articulated in the grant that you see before you. And we were just so excited and honored and pleased to hear back from Mrs. Byrne, who offered our music department $20,000 in favor of funding many of the items that were requested. And so tonight, look for you, and take a look at the proposal, as well as what Mrs. Byrne responded to our music department. And we're, as always, just so incredibly grateful for what the Byrne Foundation does for our community and also our school.
And someone who got with the viola issue, it's well taken. And we appreciate the Byrne Foundation, as always, for this very generous, as long as the work application.
I would just like to re-request that we get a total amount that the Byrne Foundation has given to us as Hannover and certainly also Dresden, because it's an extraordinary community. And we we always say thank you as individual donations are made, but I feel really strongly that we should be doing something to celebrate Dorothy Byrne's generosity as a school. And I also wanted to observe that I never knew a bassoon cost over $7,000.
And you may recall from a previous meeting too, that that our band teacher also made a request with friends in around our schools too, and received a donation.
And it's amazing to see I was at the RNS Band Concert last year.
Yes.
And we're all missing the orchestra concert, but it's incredible how much what they've earned here and how it keeps going. And there were like solos yesterday that were inspiring. So yeah, many much thanks to the Byrne Foundation.
Yes.
Any other comments from board members or our copious public members here tonight? Anyone online? For those folks online, please refer to raise your zoom hand and call on you as appropriate. Right? In that case, we will take a motion if someone with care made it.
I look to approve the donation with sincere gratitude from the Byrne Foundation in the amount of $20,000 to be used for the Ray School Music Program as presented.
Standing by Tony, all those in favor. That's just us tonight, okay? It is unanimous five zero. For the note taker, I note that Marcella is traveling and will not be with us tonight. Kelly, I believe will be calling in eventually from her offsite location, but she has not joined us yet. And we're going to close the hearing and move to the regular board meeting. We'll take public comment at this time. If you wish to speak about something not related to an item already on the agenda, please raise your hand virtually or now, or proceed now. Otherwise, please hold until your specific topic comes to us. Anyone? Nothing here and nothing online. All right. Thank you much. We'll move right along to the principal's report. Let's run on, Lauren.
I'll see that I'm sure you have my time to the all important presentation around the budget tonight. But just highlighting a few things that have happened, noting that one of the weeks was taken up by partial part of the week was taken up by next evening break. So this always comes really quickly. The December principals report comes fast. So quick enrollment update, we're one up since last month, and we are anticipating two more students joining us in January. I had the pleasure of going to Manchester, New Hampshire with Ben and Jay for the second 22nd Annual Celebration of Leadership in Education Awards Ceremony. And you can read that about that there. We were joined by some other guests as well and some other folks that were honored. Just a gratitude to the PTO for a lovely lunch that they put on on one of our new dismissal days. So we were holding conferences, but also got to enjoy some delicious lunch, as well as gratitudes from families and a sort of high five written on some handprints. We had an excellent opportunity for our for our students that you can read about through our music program. And then just letting everybody know that we have concluded our first conferences of the year. So next up, we'll have digital progress reports coming out on January 24th. And then our next set of conferences happen in March. Please to report that we hired one new inclusion EA since the last time that we met, but there are still many positions open. Anybody that is watching or interested, please reach out. We're still looking for more great folks. Our media specialists, along with a team of volunteers, hosted our winter book fair, which was a great success and in support of our birthday book program. And then we have some upcoming great activities, including the Dartmouth Basketball Education Day that our students will be attending. Hopefully that you can enjoy the artwork on display at Massoma Bank downtown during this holiday season. And then we're always supporting our community through donated helpers donations. Items listed there are items that can be donated to the school for the Haven this month. Back into answering questions.
Thank you, Lauren. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public from the stand right? Awesome. Thank you much, Lauren. Appreciate it. It was definitely surreal at that dinner to see who we were standing with. It was very surreal and nice. We were allowing the special education update. We're walking Brett Derrick to the floor. Hi, Brett. Jamie, any chance we go full screen?
Thanks. I'm Brett Derrick. I'm the director for student services. And during the budget season, I'd like to give an update, overview of special education, because it is a substantial portion of the Ray School budget. So I'm going to briefly get over what special education is, some data specific to the Ray School, and then implications for it. And if you have any questions, while I'm speaking, please just interrupt me or raise your hand. So special education is all governed by Individuals with Disabilities Act, Education Act, which is federal education law, and then states implement that in accordance with the laws and make a few changes depending on the state. Really, the overview is that students with disabilities need to be afforded the same educational opportunities and appropriate programs as students without disabilities. And so there are lots of laws, paperwork, procedures, foundational principles in place to ensure that happens. And as a public tool, we're responsible for educating all children regardless of disability. A few primary tenants. FATE is great appropriate public education that students with disabilities should be educated and will be educated with no additional cost to the parents in a way that's appropriate to their learning. LRE is least restrictive environment, which ensures that students with disabilities are educated in the classrooms with their general education teachers, with their peers as much as possible. And they're only removed when necessary because of the major language and what it's a bit. Then IEP is the program and the document that's created that details child strengths, where their needs are, what the school is going to do about it, what the services, the supports, the programs are. And then there are goals which are measured to ensure that the child will make progress. Next slide. Very briefly, the process is structured and regulated by the state. And so there are timelines to ensure both that the school district doesn't delay in addressing needs, but also allows the school district sufficient time to complete the process that we need to. A referral is the first step, and that can be made by a parent, a teacher. In New Hampshire, it can be anybody, could be a neighbor, they could contact the school. And when we get that information, we have to meet within 15 days to address the concerns, look at school records and decide, do we feel like a special education evaluation is necessary? If the team says yes, they would suspect the disability category, which I'll show on the next slide. And then we have to complete assessments, evaluations, gather information within 60 days, meet and determine if the child is eligible. To be eligible for special education in an IEP, there's three criteria. One, you have to meet the definition of one of the educational disabilities, and there are 13 different ones. That disability has to have an adverse effect on your learning. So we have a number of students at the Ray School and across SEU 70 that have some condition, whether it's anxiety disorder, ADHD, my learning disability, that doesn't adversely impact their learning significantly that they need an IEP, but they may need some accommodations or additional supplements. And there are all students where there is a significant adverse impact. And then they need something specifically designed for them based on their needs, and that's that third criteria. Once that decision is made, within 30 days, the team meets and develops that plan, that IEP, and then implements it as soon as possible afterwards. And then every year, that whole documented plan is reviewed by the team, updated, looked at progress. It can be updated sooner, but at least once annually. And then in three years, the child goes through a reevaluation to look at, do they continue to be eligible for an IEP? And where are their needs at now and what progress has been made so we can redesign the program to make sure it's aligned with where they're currently at.
Yeah, right. What would happen if a parent disagreed? Like they come to you or sometimes you're like, I think they need help with the X issue. You investigate, you say, I don't think this is an issue. But what do they, what would they do next if they disagree with you?
It depends on which part of the process. So if we have a referral meeting and the school team and the parents and anyone else that's a part of that child's world wants to attend, and the school team looks at it and says, no, the child is making sufficient progress, and the parent disagrees and says, well, I really want an evaluation. Their option at that point is to either use something called alternative dispute resolution, which the process they can engage in with the school district or with the state to try to reach an agreement on that disagreement. If the evaluation is completed and the team goes through the assessment results and finds that the child doesn't meet the criteria, but the parent disagrees, that same process can be used. The parent can also request an independent evaluation, and that would be at public expense. So in the regulation, if parents disagree with our evaluation, they can have an independent evaluation done by someone that's not an employee in the school district. Have that completed, and then the school team would meet to review that. This is a list of special education disability categories. They don't necessarily align with medical diagnoses. They each have their own specific definition that's written into the IDEA regulation. Uh, they each have their own specific definition that's written into the IDA regulations. Um, and part of what the assessment looks at is, do they meet that criteria? So you can be a student. With a diagnosis of autism spectrum disorder, but you may not need an IEP for it because it's not significantly impacting your learning. Um, similarly with speech language impairment. You can have some articulate, partake, articulation issues. I did many years of speech, so. I'm fluent in that process. Um. And that may not be adversely impacting your educational experience, you most, you may still want to seek out some support, but it's not something we have. Developmental delay, just DV on the bottom. That's a category that's sort of a catchall for our youngest students up through age nine. Right, and that really stems from the, the research and understand that early intervention is the best. Way to address needs, and so when students are identified with developmental delay. It's kind of a general, not a specific category definition, um, disability. Because you want to ensure those children are getting the supports and services they need, and then when they. At their next evaluation after they turn nine, the team would then reconsider. Are they still eligible and if so, under what new category in the school age? Next slide. This is the last of the, the process slides and then we'll get into the Ray School data, um. After we develop an IP and during that process, the team really looks at how do you meet that child's needs? Most of the students in the Ray School. Uh, spend the majority of their time in their classroom, they're in fifth grade and most of the time is in the fifth grade classroom. They may be pulled out, which is for push-in, start there, which is when a specialist, so a special educator, speech language pathologist. Professional therapist will go into the classroom or the learning space and work with the child in that setting. Um, could be in small group, could be in one-on-one. Pull out is when that specialist will take a student out of. What their class is doing and work with them in a separate setting, that may be with. Few other students or maybe one-on-one, and that's utilized when the skill that they're teaching can't be done effectively in the classroom. So we have a number of students with specific learning disabilities. Whose reading instruction is significantly different than what they're learning in the classroom. And so those professionals would work with the students on those. Foundational basic reading skills in a separate setting, and then we work to transition those skills and generalize them into the classroom. Co-teaching in collaboration, we don't utilize any formal co-teaching here. Um, it's a model, a high school, we have one class and Marion Cross have used it in the past where the general ed teacher and the classroom teacher. Go teach, um, a whole class or a specific subject and it's designed for those two people together. Proactively to ensure that all the students in the class have their learning needs met effectively. And then academic behavior support is primarily provided by our educational assistance. And that's to ensure that students while in the classroom, um. Are afforded the support they need to access the content, whether or not they need additional prompts because they're inattentive or their. Reading ability is below where it needs to be independently, and so that adult can support that person with the combination. A few of our students have one-on-one. Behavioral support, um, for, for self-care needs, that's an educational system that's assigned to work specifically with that student. Because their needs are significant enough that they need somebody to help facilitate whether it's communication or behavior plan, um, throughout the day.
So for the push-in and push-out stuff with your reading example, somebody needs help on reading and they're either pulled out or someone goes in to help. Do they do that during when the rest of their class is doing reading? Or could they theoretically be like pulled out during math? Which then they get further behind in math in order to get, uh, catch up on reading?
Yeah.
I guess there, is that part of the schedule?
That's a great question and embarrass. Um, one, we start with what does the student needs, and if they need four times a week of thirty minutes of. Explicit reading instruction, that's what we start with. And then we look at their schedule, our special education schedules, our special educators' schedules and find times that. Work the best for everybody. So there are times where students may, um. Be removed from an ELA lesson and get some structured reading because that lines up with what they're doing in class at a different. Level, and there may be times where the team wants that student in the ELA. And in addition to want them to get additional reading, and so we may take them out of another. Learning opportunity. Another part of the school. Now looking at some specific Ray School data, uh, and what this slide shows is, um. Our highest number of students with disabilities, those categories, they're autism spectrum disorders, speech language impairment. Emotional disturbance, other health impairments, specific learning disability and DV. Um, and so what this shows over the past five years is we continually have. Similarly sized cohorts of students in those categories. Um, which is consistent across the state of New Hampshire, uh, I did look at ASD, we, we're seeing an increase. Uh, and so I looked at the New Hampshire wide data. And the state is also seeing, um, over the past ten years, there's been about a two point two percent increase. In students identified with autism spectrum disorder, so our trend is consistent with, with what other districts are seeing. We're just a smaller. Portion of that, um, and another thing, when I look at the New Hampshire statewide data, that includes K through twelve. And here we're only looking at K through five. And so our percentage of students with developmental delay, which is only for students at age nine, that would be far lower than the aggregate New Hampshire statewide. This also lets us look at our educational professionals and what areas of need we have, um. Most if not all of our special educators have been trained in, um, you know, literacy strategies and structured language approaches because. Majority of our students with IEPs have specific learning disability related needs. Um, speech language, speech language impairment, we have two speech language professionals. To address those students, um, other health impairment is. Uh, category for students that have some health conditions, uh, oftentimes can be. ADHD, anxiety, uh, executive function dysfunction, um, that impacts their learning. And so that other health impairment is a bit of a catch-all for, for health conditions that impact students.
Does that mean some students are double counted or what?
Yes, no, they're not double counted, so this is. Uh, by primary disability, so some students do, do have. Two or more educational disabilities, this is just looking at the primary one and primary is determined by which one is most impactful on their learning. Like if we were to hypothetically dissect the child and say, okay. If you also weren't inattentive and you just had a reading disability, which would be more impactful in your learning? That's how the team decides which is primary and which is secondary. But the order of which doesn't dictate what services and how we address them. So this looks at the percentage of students. From the total enrollment at the Ray School that have IEPs or in special education, um. So New Hampshire is consistently above the Ray School. Uh, we did have this fall, we had, well, starting in July one through December one. We had nine new IEP students, um, so they're not all counted in here because I pulled this information in. Early November, um, so maybe slightly higher, but I don't know, enrollment also went up since then.
Does this data also capture kids with five oh fours rather than IEPs?
No, this is just due to the IEPs and I. Don't include five oh fours because they're not included, students with those needs aren't included in the special education budget.
Cause there's some overlap, right, so when you talk about learning disabilities and ADHD and such. A child may be diverted to a five oh four rather than an IEP depending on the classroom performance, I believe, is?
Depending on the, the level of need, and so this is looking at just the students that have IEPs, but there are a number, um. I can pull it up backwards, but there are a number of students at the Ray School that have. A five oh four plan, which is a, a separate law, it's a civil rights law, not an educational law. That ensures that students aren't discriminated against and that they're provided equitable education.
And isn't it that the costs are so much lesser for the five oh four implementation that they're not included? As a, as a line I'd like to look at for special education?
They're included in the, the general Ray School operating budget and the costs are, I would say, quite small. Um, most students. At most would have maybe a consultation service, a student with, um, a hearing impairment. We may need the contract of a cardiologist to check their cochlear implants and make sure that our equipment is working. Um, but it's rare for students with five oh four plans to receive weekly services like a student on an IEP.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tony?
Um. Uh, this is Ray School versus State of New Hampshire comparison, so the state includes K through twelve. So is it a higher or lower percentage? At K through five? Than if you had the full?
I think my next slide.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, that is, makes it interesting. Uh, so what I did here was kept down. State of New Hampshire line, the Ray School is the, the thicker blue line, and then I also included Marion Cross. The middle school and high school, um, to look at trends over, I believe it's ten years. Um, the New Hampshire statewide data is only available up to the, this year twenty-three. Um, and so consistently, uh, except for the past few years, the elementary schools tend to have higher percentage. Rates than the middle school and high school, and that trend is consistent across other districts. Um, primarily because they're, we're doing our jobs well, we're identifying students early, um, it should be rare that we're. Newly identifying students at the high school level unless something significantly changes in their functioning. Um, and there are a number of students every year that are discharged from special education because their needs. No longer require targeted instruction, and if they still have a condition, they may move to a five oh four plan where they get some accommodations and supports. But don't need an IEP. Uh, but the Ray School is higher than Marion Cross, um, and what I. At true, a good portion of that too is that, um. At the Ray School in Hanover responsible for preschool students that have disabilities. You don't have any enrollment numbers for other preschool students because you're on a program. And so at the Marion Cross School, when I calculate their percentage, it includes pre-K, all students. Up through sixth grade, and here this includes. All students K groups, sorry, K through fifth grade, but also includes. Pre-K students just with IEPs, and so when I take out, I think there are eleven students in pre-K with IEPs and when I take those students out. It drops our percentage down to about twelve point five. So. Yeah. Next slide. Brings us to the budget implications and portion of my presentation. Uh, so at the Ray School and for the Hanover School District, uh, the special education budget for expenses includes. K through five, special education staff, materials, contract and services. Early childhood special education, which I was just speaking about, is for students. Of preschool age three through five while they enter kindergarten, uh, and the need, the learning needs that they have, so that's. For our staff to work with those students in whatever setting they're in. Contract and services if needed, materials, and I feel preschool tuition. The preschool child's team determines that they need a structured preschool environment in order to build those skills and practice. Pre-kindergarten readiness skills, that's something that's included in the child's IEP and our professionals will work with that student in that location. Also for expenses, extended school year, uh, primarily this is over the summer months where students. Would be not a great place in the fall, uh, if they didn't, if we, if they didn't receive any services for that. Two months in the summer. And so each spring, every student's team with an IEP meets, looks at the progress, looks at the data and determines. Does this child need something over the summer to maintain that progress? Um, it's not a time to make up ground or to, um, progress ahead, but it's really about. What do they need to maintain and be ready in the fall to pick up where we left off. And then out of district, schools and programs for Hanover residents. So even students of Dresden age that are, wouldn't be attending the middle school or high school. Their special education needs require that they attend an out-of-district program, those costs come back to. The Hanover School District.
So, want me to show some numbers here?
Sure, look at numbers.
So the special education proposed for twenty-five, twenty-six in total. Is four million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand, of that. Uh, there is, uh, out-of-district tuition projected at one point. Two million, two, one point two and a half million. Just to put some of that in perspective for you.
Brett, when do we get involved if at all for not, for students not attending Hanover schools or Hanover residents or what are private schools? Like those who prospered or a homeschool kid that lives in Hanover, do we get involved with any sort of special aid?
Uh, so parents of children without or with disabilities can send their child to any school they want. So if we have parents, um, that live in Hanover and they want to send their child to. A school somewhere and they don't have an IEP, there's no involvement from our school.
Sorry, if there, if there is an IEP.
So if they have, they've been identified and have an educational disability, um. Our responsibility to school districts is to propose an IEP. That meets a child's needs and our primary placement for that child will be in our school. So if we, as the team, decide we can meet that child's needs in our program here. But the parent wants to send them to a program in another town, um, they can do that. And we as a school district don't have any responsibility, called a unilateral.
Yeah. Being a homeschooler?
Uh, homeschooling, uh, if a student has an educational disability and they're homeschooled. Again, we would say we can meet your child's needs if you want to enroll in here, if you don't. The only requirement that we have as a school district is a very small portion of our, uh, IDAB grants. Which is prorated based on the number of students in homeschool, and so. At minimum, or at, at most, it would, it may be a few weeks of service from one of our providers. To a homeschool student, that, then we would meet our threshold cap. Yeah, allocated amount we're going to provide to that student. If you just go back for a second. Um, so the expenses are large, revenue, that's a great coming back. Um, every year we get a, an annual IDAB grant, um. Over the past couple of years, it's been around a hundred and twenty thousand, Dresden also gets one. Um, and so primarily we use that over the years for staffing. Um, I believe three of our staff are partially. Um, their salary is partially covered by that grant, uh, and then. Any additional funds we use for unexpected costs, whether it's some equipment or we need to update. Some evaluation or testing protocols that we have. And the other revenue is special education aid, which used to be called catastrophic aid. Uh, and it's a funky formula, and so we spend the money. And then the following year, the state reimburses us, reimburses us. A portion of it never fully reimburses us as it's supposed to, um. And that's based on the actual cost for each student that we submit to the state, so if a student was placed out of district. And their program costs two hundred thousand dollars, we calculate that, we send that to the state and then they reimburse us. Eighty percent at. The amount between three point five per pupil cost and ten, and then anything over. Ten times the per pupil state average, they fully reimburse. And then, and then, when they don't have enough money, they prorate that, um. And so what I told, because the. Education commissioner sent a letter to the state, I know the newspaper picked it up as well, saying that there's. Really big shortfall in funds available for special education aid across the state. Uh, and so for. This school year twenty-four, so the last school year. There were expenses for us and I estimated at the time of building the budget back then, that we were gonna spend about. Five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars worth of eligible costs. At the end of the school year, we actually spent five hundred and fifty thousand, that was submitted to the state, um. And I expect. And I expected the proration rate of eighty percent, which I thought was reasonable, and that would have gotten us back four hundred and forty thousand. And then the rate that came back was prorated at sixty six percent, and so we're expecting to get back this year for expenses last year, three hundred and sixty five. So I've adjusted my estimates for next year with a much lower proration rate so that we're at least closer to. Getting what we expect in the future.
And the projections get adjusted because New Hampshire doesn't set tax rate until October. So that we have, we're notified by the state prior to setting our revenues. That the original projection we had is too long, so we lowered the projection and, and then, you know, then we set that straight.
Yep. Was there?
What? I, um, I find that element of your presentation and the, the most deeply troubling because. As a privileged school district, we're going to be able. Knock on wood to, you know, navigate this shortfall. But a lot of other schools in the state of New Hampshire aren't, and. Is there an association you belong to that has any teeth to make a statement? Should we as a school board be making a statement? Should, is there something that we can do? On behalf of school districts that are looking at significant shortfalls? And, um. What might we do?
I, I appreciate your question and your desire to help. The, there's a New Hampshire Association for Special Education Administrators, uh, which I'm a member of. And we have public meetings, and there's legislative committees and rulemaking committees, and so there are members of that organization that. Attend the statewide meetings, um, send communication to the Department of Education, try and get these things resolved. I know there are some pending. Lawsuit or court things, you know, the combat suit and appropriate education and the state funding, which is kind of connected to this. Um, but there has been a lot of communication from colleagues of mine in my position from across the state. To the Department of Education stating our slumbleness with this decision and. Sure, there are some funds that could be reallocated to support districts, but none of that has changed. I mean, that communication was happening prior to the, the letter notification coming out.
Just following on with that, I, I believe that this is the first time that this pullback has happened in this. Because I believe eighty percent we were kind of excited about getting, even though that was kind of the average, because it was lower in history. Just if, was there any lawsuit or, and like, was there any impetus that went, when it was lower to the age in history or? Just, I'm just trying to predict from the future.
It used to be around sixty two, and now it's definitely sixty five, that probably about fifteen funded in the media. I don't recall that it was lawsuit that changed that dollar amount. As much as it, it could have been additional funding strings that came in from the feds. Like with Medicaid monies or?
Medicaid, no, I'm, I'm just speculating.
Yeah, it was sixty two for when I first started doing insight.
I think there are now more. Competing. Sides, people, organizations for educational funding, whether that's through the EFAs, and there's multiple millions of dollars from the state being allocated to that. And I don't know if that used to be part of funds that were available for special education aid. I also know that, uh, costs are just going up for educating students, program replacement costs, tuition continues to go up. So I think that the costs are rising well, and. They not able to keep up with that. Those are just speculations.
It could be the bump up, up into the mid eighties was also because of S F one that came in for the state, I'm not sure about that, but. Um, there was a lot of money that came into the state and, and, you know, the gap percentage kept creeping up during those times. Of course, if the, if the schools weren't running full bore, right? They probably weren't submitting as high a claims, depending on how they were operating. So that it left more money to distribute as well.
Then just two more slides. This just briefly shows how much of our Hannover School District budget. The percent of that of special education. And so, uh, it's important to remember that a good chunk of that special education cost are out of district students. Which in other school districts will be split between the K through twelve budget. And so we're pretty consistent, um, right around. The average over ten years is twenty five.
These out of district schools, are they generally nonprofits?
Uh, yes.
Do you ever do?
In, in, in New Hampshire, I believe they, in order to be approved as a private special education program. Eligible to receive federal funding on it, you have to be a nonprofit, there are programs that. Sure, are for profit schools, but we don't have these students.
Then do we ever do any sort of onsite visits or audits of what they charge us or anything like that?
So yeah, so anytime a student's placed out of district, um, even before they go, I go and tour and speak to the programs. Um, because we as a district are responsible for that placement and. In essence, that the child's needs would be met there, um, and then so. Prior to any placement, I go and have all the students there, there are annual meetings that you go and attend or visit. Depending on distance, some of those are kind of transitions of new meetings. But I've visited and. All the programs we have students attending. The last slide is. A graph showing the blue line is what was budgeted for special education costs, and then the red line is what was actually spent. Kind of people are interested, I have. Kind of the reasons for increase or why there's a difference from what was budgeted to actually spent. I'm happy to talk more about this, this year's budget when we go through the rest of the presentation. The increase this year from last year's budget. Is about fifty five thousand up in professional salaries, so special education staff. And then a large increase, um, two hundred and thirty two thousand in out of district tuition costs. The primary reasons for that increase. And then briefly, I'll just, the points for twenty three, twenty four, um, why it was less than budgeted. We had an unfilled. Special education teacher position, and I was, so specialist salaries in total were. Down about ninety five thousand, we had two hundred and seventy thousand less than educational assistance salaries, again unable to afford positions. Hundred and seventy five thousand less than insurance, like of benefits. And that year, there was two hundred and seventy five thousand less than out of district tuition when we're budgeted. I believe because we had two students whose leaves changed and or moved out of district that were attending out of district programs. And so those fluctuations can happen sometimes where our costs are less, and sometimes when, uh, students' needs change. After the budget planning process or a student moves into the district with specific needs, and then we're on the other side of being.
So where, okay, I have the same question, go for it. So where does that excess dollars go? Does it go to our reserve fund for special aid?
Um, if you have an article to redirect it there, if you don't have an article to redirect it there, then it goes back against, uh, we use it to offset. Assessment for taxation, you know, that one point. It was one point, you know, one point two, one point four last year, uh, this year. Um, and then we did redirect a hundred thousand of it, um, from the end of the fiscal year into the capital reserve funds. Um, so that's where the warrant article comes into place if we think we're going to trend with a large surplus. Also retainage, we retained as much as we were allowed, so we can carry it into the next year in case there's a problem that can be used.
Yeah, separate question.
Uh, it is separate question and a follow up comment on the reserve fund, right? So I think, um, in prior school board, um, you know, kind of thinking and a little bit maybe circling into this one, you know. The, the reserve fund amount was kind of the one and a half student in a significant residential placement. Kind of thinking, and, um, so we had, I don't, was it last year or two years? We, we've been switching off between maintenance fund and special. Education reserve fund as far as where we place our excess, so like we have surplus in excess of what we had promised in March. You know, where would that go? That's what that warrant article says, um, you know, we were trying to get back to that one and a half. Students, uh, of a cost, um, because we have been inflation and other things. If you don't add to your reserve fund amount, you're falling behind, right? And so that was kind of the idea, and that's my comment on reserve fund. Um, so we can also think about that when it comes to more part of the discussion. And then my, my question to Rhett is, um, how? And you know, are, are all of our students with IEPs being fully served to what their IEP has said? Or are we meeting based upon, you know, shortages in staff or whatever reason, scheduling, I mean, there's so many reasons, right? But are we kind of rationalized having to do that in some way?
Little show of assistant minutes? Yeah, so when we look at our students that have academic or behavioral support in their IEPs. I believe because we're not fully staffed with educational assistants. Some of those students aren't receiving a full amount of minutes that are in their IEPs. Earlier in the school year, we have the case managers communicating families for any students that were impacted by that. And offered a set of time to talk or a meeting, and also laid out like here are ways that we're supporting the child. In additional ways, because we don't have that person, that might be increased consultation with a teacher. So I believe we're still in that space when we don't have it. I did look into, for some of our schools, look into the option, um, to have the ability to get a person since the last meeting. But besides that, when somebody becomes available, there are staffing agencies which offer to provide paraprofessionals, behavior interventionists. At a cost that is quite a bit higher than, um, what we would reasonably pay with benefits. Paraprofessional here. So that is an option, but the cost. Appears to be prohibitive or not really warranted.
Any other questions for Rhett from the board? Anyone question for Rhett from the public? Thank you. Appreciate your time as always. We're gonna move on to the budgetary fund, the PIN fund. And Jamie, you want to start with transportation issues?
Yes, um, Rachel Lane, could you promote Rachel Lane to the panel? He is the title for. Um, she's the Vice President of Electrification and Sustainability for YSTA.
Can you hear me?
Here's Rachel, thank you for joining us, you're on the big screen here. Did you want to, um, present or would you like me to run the PowerPoint while you speak?
Um, I can present, that's fine, can you give me control to do so?
Why do that? It's not showing the main. Hold on one second, Rachel, thank you.
They're co-hosts.
You did? Okay, so I think they made you co-host, so you should be able to pull up your PowerPoint.
What do you need me to do, Jamie?
Pull up your PowerPoint and share your.
I have it pulled up, um, I don't know how do you share it from here.
If you can't, you can.
No, it's not, it's not giving me an option to share my, to share my screen, so I can just walk along with you if you've got the first slide up.
I will share the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Does this, so folks following along home, um, are able to see it? And Stacy Emerson is with us as well, um, I was going to just, uh. Did you want to promote Stacy or are you all set? There's a question. And also, I'm sorry, Brian Hemingway is here with us in person. So Brian is here with us as well, Rachel in person, I think you already knew that from emails.
Yeah.
Brian is the Vice President of Operations for Northern New England for RIDE STA. Um, I'm with you now, if you want to, um. Go ahead, I will move the slides forward.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about electric buses to you all for a few minutes. My name is Rachel Lane, I'm the VP of Electrification and Sustainability for Student Transportation of America. Next slide, please. So just briefly, I'm gonna go over where we're at, um, at STA with our electrification progress. Talk about, um, some general benefits of electric school buses and community engagement that we can also, um, take part with, with, with electric school buses. And talk about the funding opportunity that we have, um, for you all with this project. Next slide, please. So STA has been doing electrification on school buses since twenty twenty, we currently have thirty seven on the road. We have another hundred and fifteen that are in active planning development, infrastructure development. And we've got several hundred more that we're hoping to launch, um, all pending grant approvals. We've delivered buses across the United States and Canada to a variety of climates and customer bases. We are the second largest bus contractor in North America, we're a key account for all of the bus OEMs. When we have an issue and we call, they answer the phone for us. Um, so we are in a good position, um, to deliver the best service that we can, um, from a bus perspective. Our charging solution partner in charge provides services nationwide for fleet, delivery, transportation industries, again, we're a key account for them. Our grant writing firm that we work with, um, handles all of the grant backend processing and compliance. To make sure that we follow all of the EPA regulations from start to finish. Locally in your area, we have four electric buses that are currently running in New Hampshire. We have two deployed to Berry, Vermont, and we are delivering this week three to White River Valley, Vermont. Uh, we've got the training scheduled, uh, at Stacy's terminal, um, on Thursday, so exciting.
So I might want to add there too, I think you all, um, along with Stacy had invited any of us up if you wanted to come. Um, we were gonna share some information about when they get delivered, right? So we'll, we'll, we'll get that information up here. Sorry, Rachel, I'll go on to the next slide.
Thank you. So some general benefits of electric school buses, they're healthier for our students, our drivers and our communities. Anybody that's in local proximity to an electric school bus can take advantage of those benefits immediately. They have zero tailpipe emissions, um, diesel exhaust is a carcinogen, diesel exhaust is, is linked to negative cognitive developmental impacts. Diesel exhaust negatively impacts respiratory health. Diesel exhaust negatively impacts respiratory health. It has more of an impact to children just because their bodies are smaller and their lungs are smaller and still developing. And pollution levels that are found um in a diesel bus can be several times higher than pollution levels on the outside of a diesel bus. Next slide, please. So we did an estimate on the reduced emissions that would come from converting three of your diesel buses to electric buses. An annual greenhouse gas emission reduction is approximately thirty one metric tons of CO2e. And an annual critical air pollutant emission reduction is approximately a hundred and seven pounds. That actual number is going to vary just based on on the mileage that is run. Um, but this is for all three of those buses on an annual basis. That would be the emissions reduction that the electric buses would bring. There's also increased operational efficiency on an electric bus versus a diesel bus. School buses are a great use case for electric vehicles because they run established regular routes. You can optimize your charging schedule based on those routes. They have regenerative braking, which extends the range of the bus and it also reduces the brake wear and tear. And they give a good rider experience. There's a lower engine noise. This leads to, believe it or not, better behavior on the bus from the students because it's not so loud in there. So they're not shouting over the diesel engine. They're calmer, they're quieter. Um, the buses are smooth and they're a pleasant ride. And the drivers that that we have um that are operating them love them. So they're a good tool for driver motivation, driver retention. Next slide, please. So we've done a variety of things at our other locations to partner with the local community and the local school districts um on engagement with the electric buses. They're a great educational tool for the students. We do provide all the training for the drivers and the maintainers. And when we do training, we also bring in the local first responders in the area so that they know these buses are in their communities, they get an understanding of what they're looking at, how to identify one in public and where the disconnect points are on the high voltage system. We've done different things with electric buses that can be at your service or at your liking, um informational sessions, demoing them to neighboring districts, using them in local Earth Day events, local media events. Um, we've we've supported a variety of activities with our buses. And having electric buses will align with um your district's climate action plan and strategic plans. Next slide, please. So I'll just go over a couple of common questions, but of course, please ask me anything else that wouldn't be covered on here. How long do the batteries last and what happens to them when they need to be replaced? The batteries are covered by multi-year warranties with a minimum of eight years. Um, I can provide you full warranty information on on the bus if if you would like more details. The batteries do degrade over time, just like the batteries in your cell phone do degrade. But with proper storage and minimizing high rate charging, that does extend the life of the battery. Battery life and battery end of life technology is still relatively new. It is evolving. Um, right now, they can be used for external storage or recycled once they reach their optimal life lifespan. What type of buses and and what are their ranges? Um, most types of buses are also available in electric models. Your type C is is what um we're planning to bring to you. The range on this bus is going to be approximately a hundred hundred miles for a full charge. Is the battery range reduced in hot and cold climates? Uh, yes, it is. Um, we have seen that. That's that is reported. That's um, we do see some loss in cold climates. Um, we expect to see that. Um, we do teach our drivers to precondition the batteries before they leave for the day. So this ensures that the cabins are comfortable for the riders and that the batteries are at the optimal temperature to reduce um any impacts from the colder weather. Um, again, they also have the regenerative braking that the drivers can use to help um get energy back into that battery and and make them run more efficiently. Next slide, please. What about fires? So first
Fine, there you go, sorry.
First, I want to emphasize that school bus transportation is the safest form of transportation for children, bar none. Um, school bus fires are extremely rare and even more so in electric buses than in their combustion engine counterparts. The buses, including the batteries, undergo rigorous testing and the batteries are in protective encasing that sits between the frame rails. Um, they're equipped with automatic and manual high voltage disconnects. Like I said, we provide training to their first responders, the bus manufacturers, and also the um NFPA also have additional training and information on responding to battery fires. Another question, doesn't the pollution just shift to the electric grid? So the immediate dirty air that a student breathes in in and around in a diesel bus is eliminated when you make the switch to an electric bus. Bus charging itself does produce extra emissions on the electric grid. That's absolutely true. Um, that amount does vary based on how clean your grid is. Um, STA every year does full carbon accounting, both on their scope one emissions, their emissions that their buses generate and also their scope two emissions, that is the emissions that are generated from utility usage and um things like like bus charging. So yes, you do have, you will have pollution that some of that will be shifted to the electric grid, but it is less than what is generated just from operating a diesel bus. So this bus or these buses were funded um with support from the EPA Clean School Bus Program. This is a five-year, five billion dollar program. Over two point seven billion has already been awarded to over thirteen hundred school districts at a number of almost nine thousand buses. You were funded with the third round of this this funding. It was a lottery-based rebate round. Um, and your district is categorized as non-priority um based on how the EPA does their categorization. So that does put you at a lower funding level than districts that are categorized as priority. The bus ownership, as per the terms of the grant, we own the bus. It is to serve the district for five years after delivery. So we can't get these buses and just run them wherever we feel like. They are for your district. Um, should our contract end with you prior to the five years, we have a couple of different options. We could move the bus to another district, or you could buy or lease the bus from us, or we could sell or lease the bus to who your next contract provider is. So there there are options with that. Um, far and away, the EPA Clean School Bus Program is the best opportunity for grant funding in the country. So here's a high-level breakdown of the project financials. Um, an electric, these electric buses were three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars apiece. The EPA incentive was two hundred thousand dollars apiece. A diesel bus is approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So you can see the cost difference on the electric, three electric versus three diesel, inclusive of the EPA funding. The infrastructure with the utility upgrade is approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We did get a small incentive from Green Mountain Power. We're anticipating. So the total project cost is five seventy-one. Uh, there's a direct, there's a cost to the district of three seventy-five. The capital improvements that we're making to support this project are approximately a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. I showed a a breakdown of the three routes that we're anticipating um using for the three electric buses, the mileage. Is there a question?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Just one of the, one of the computers, uh, mine in its own.
Okay. So I I showed a breakdown of the estimated mileage, the estimated diesel cost, the estimated charging costs and the delta between diesel versus electric that we're anticipating. And then also an estimated savings in preventative maintenance. Um, the preventative maintenance costs are based on what we've seen so far at our other sites. Again, this is routine preventative maintenance work. And the electric charging costs are based on utility rates that are available at our terminal and what we are anticipating our charging cost based on our anticipated efficiency that we will we will get from the bus.
I'm just going to make a note here, um, before we go on, Rachel, one second. Uh, when you look at the budget as built, um, the dollar amount of what we have already expected to pay for a new diesel fleet is included in our budget as built for Hamlet. Um, STA America is going to, they're going to keep the infrastructure and because it fits with what their um national plan is with regards to environmental, uh, we will not be reimbursing STA for that, uh, the capital improvements and the difference between the diesel buses and the electric buses. So, um, that will not, the dollar amounts that we had already had budgeted were based on a five-year extension with our vendor that is STA, which we already have. So the number that's in the budget, however, may, if we decide to do this, go down by approximately seven thousand dollars. And that would be tied to what we expect the savings to be in the diesel costs. Okay, so depending on, you know, when we make this decision or what the decision is, there may be an adjustment to that. Is my, is my point. Okay, Rachel, I'll go on to the next slide.
So the next steps, we have quotes for both the bus and the infrastructure ready to execute um as as soon as we get the green light from you all, they will be executed. The electric buses um will be on order. The infrastructure design process has already begun. Bus delivery takes approximately a year or so, but we don't take delivery of buses until the infrastructure is complete. We find that the infrastructure tends to be the longer lead of the two and we can't take the buses until we have charging available for them. So that, the biggest driver of the timeline will be the timeline for Green Mountain Power to provide the upgrades to the site that we need. It approximately a year and a half from order will be what we're looking at um for a timeline. And we'll have a better idea once we get a firmer commitment from Green Mountain Power, which we will do when we have the official green light from you all and then we'll we'll go into the detailed design on the infrastructure. Alternatively, a diesel delivery is about nine months.
Kim has a question.
Yeah, so um and actually kind of, I get along, um, another idea. But so if they, if we don't get the buses until August twenty twenty-six, but this is the budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, what do we do August twenty twenty-five?
We will, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we've had that conversation. So what we will do is we will maintain, we will keep on hand three of our buses, I believe, that we already own from the prior lease agreement. Um, where they're, you know, shared between us. So we'll keep three of those and then rotate them in and out. Um, and when they buy the new diesel fleet, we also, when they bring in a new diesel fleet, we bring in, I believe it's three additional buses for routes for odd trip trips. For trips, we keep them for athletic trips and, you know, educational trips and all of those. So they'll keep the three that has to be, because you have to, um, not damage, but destroy, right? You have to destroy three buses when you take delivery of three electric buses. So we'll keep those three buses that will be destroyed upon delivery of the electric buses and they'll switch them out. Four, um, not my area of activities at all, but it seems like even in the past couple of years, technology has changed um around electric vehicles. And so if we purchase vehicles now and a year and a half from now, the technology has changed in a way that is better. How can we or can we benefit from that? Are we locked into a year and a half old technology at that point? Rachel, did you hear the question?
I did. So the bus OEMs, they're not like cars in that they're coming out with a new model every year. Um, when they do make improvements to things that can be updated with software, um, we see that continually. Um, and so you would have the latest software availability. Um, charger and bus interoperability firmware, um, those type of things are being updated all the time. Um, and that will continue after your bus delivery. But huge, I don't know how to describe it, big changes from bus platform to bus platform don't happen all the time. Um, just because there's so much R and D and so much development that's required. Um, the chargers themselves, they the model that we will buy will be consistent in that it's the power, um, the power kilowatt from the company that will stay. But again, as they make updates to firmware, software features, those are continually refreshed. Um, and they have rollout plans for patches to deliver across all the sites and whatnot. And so we have this same charger model in other locations and as they make fixes, patches, improvements, et cetera, those fixes get delivered to everybody. So I I hope I hope that answers your your question.
Yeah.
Kim, did you have a follow up?
I have several, but um, I guess, uh, it's it's on on your bus destroy comment is one. Um, who current, I believe we need, right? So who who currently owns our buses now?
STA.
And right, so then they'll, as far as destroying, they'll do whatever they need to do to oppose that, right? So, um, that's one thing. Okay. And then so we will be basically, um, okay. The the other thing was, um, kind of more talking about this infrastructure that's to be developed, which, you know, is this larger investment that STA is doing? Um, you know, can we hear more about the future planning on that? Okay.
Yep, so so we have in a subsequent slide what your site layout or what the terminal site layout will look like with the chargers. Um, if, these are just some pictures of some of our training events and some of our deployments, but if you go down to the next slide. This is the site plan for what it will look like with the little gray boxes on the right-hand side will be where the chargers are mounted. Um, there's a new utility service drop that needs to be added. That's that's also identified on there. Um, I can provide you specifications of the chargers if you're interested in in seeing those, if you'd like more detail on that. Um, there's uh, chargers that get mounted onto pedestals and then the conduit and cable runs to the switchgear, which is tied into the utility service connection point. Um, what what kind of, what other details are you looking for?
Uh, just I mean, the comment on like proper storage to increase longevity and everything. It looks like these are going to be based on the picture, right? Not covered, not, you know, just kind of aside from, you know, parking car connected to
Yeah, so so what that means is, um, like if you are not running your bus for two weeks because it's Christmas vacation or you're down for a few weeks because it's summer vacation, there's a procedure that you follow to shut the bus down completely. Um, rather than having it sit there and the battery drain or having it stay on a charger and keep charging unnecessarily and having charge and discharge through the battery when it's not going to be used. So so that's what I mean in that regard. When we know we have a period of downtime that's more than a weekend, we'll shut the bus down completely. We'll turn off um the battery system so that the bus sits completely dormant and the battery's not being exercised in any way.
It just about, this is the capacity of this plan. So say we decided to, you know, purchase all of our whole fleet, you know, what what would be the capacity of that? Or if all of the districts are currently engaged with these contracts, purchase whole fleets, you know, would that be, you know, it just, it would, it would be interesting because then that would increase, you know, our timeline if we, if there needed to be more infrastructure.
Yeah, so so that is a good point. And this current cost in this current design is not future-proofed aside for adding one more bus. We are not running additional conduit. We're not putting in a larger than needed switchgear for this time. We're not adding additional, um, you know, chargers that aren't going to be used. Now, depending on the circumstances, sometimes we're future-proof, sometimes we don't. This cost, this price is not, is not a future-proofed um, design.
Uh, there was also another question, um, Rachel, that we discussed and I would love for you to put it on the record. It was a question that came from um the Hamlet Sustainability folks. Um, when we had met earlier on, Um when we had met earlier on, um they had asked about whether or not a charger of this kind uh could, could feed back to the grid. Could you talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, so, so that is vehicle to grid. Um it's done in various small pockets of utilities across the country. This site is not currently set up for that. Um that's a bigger investment. It's a bigger charging investment. It's a bigger timeline with the utility because you have to go through their interconnection process. Is it technically possible? Yes. Have we done it here? No. Just for, because of the reasons that I stated, it's a much more complicated infrastructure delivery, both from a, a time and a coordination and um and a cost perspective.
Is it, as a follow-up, is it fair to say that if, in a, once we get these and they're rolling, if the district wants to look to make um an investment in the future fleet perhaps and move them all to that type that we could potentially look at.
Oh, we absolutely can. We absolutely can. Um I, I guess I would just say that for as much good press as V to G gets, it's really only being done out of, you can probably count on one hand the number of locations. Um and so there's still a lot of technical challenge that comes with it. But absolutely, it could be addressed for a future iteration if, if Hanover was looking for a bigger, longer-term type deployment.
Thank you.
Rachel, um is, are these buses the same capacity in terms of number of people that can fit on the buses?
Yes, yeah.
And it probably a question for Jamie more so than um you guys, but in terms of specific routes, I'm kind of surprised to see H ten on here, given one of the concerns was hills and ice. Would that be one of our hillier, more distant?
No, actually, um the, oh, there's only a couple hills on ten and it's a natural launch. And um and it's not, even though the weather's really bad, they come down to the bottom of the hill. Um but some of our other routes that go up through Laramie, that go out of Greensboro, that go there, those are much hillier on a regular basis up and down and they're longer. They're lo, they're a longer distance. So oftentimes the distance um will, and you, you know more than I do, Brian, but um they looked at all the different routes and this is the three that they have picked.
What are, what's the total distance of these bus routes?
Um if you go to slide right here, slide ten, uh bus route ten is fifty-four mile. Bus route five is forty and bus route four, oh, it's running off. And bus route four is thirty-eight.
Just a follow-up. So I have an electric car and in the winter I say I get maybe fifty-five, sixty percent of my, you know, theoretical capacity theoretical miles because of cold weather. So if you have a bus route that's fifty-four and it's hun, I mean, is a hundred accounting, you said that the hundred mile range, is that accounting for cold weather? Or is that ideal conditions in cold weather? There could be.
So a hundred, so a couple of things. First, on the hills, hills aren't necessarily bad because you can use the regenerative braking going down the hill to gain some power or some um energy back into your battery. Really, the worst thing for an electric bus is driving on a highway. Um because there's no stops and starts and, and there's no hills, so you're not braking. This mileage here is both AM and PM together. And so you would have an opportunity to charge in the middle of the day if you needed to, um for whatever reason. The hundred i- is an average. Um it could be lower on, in the winter. Could be better on, on good condition days. Again, it's, it's going to depend um on the conditions of the route. It's going to depend on the temperature. It's going to depend on how good the drivers are at being efficient with their driving and with their regenerative braking. Like we've seen at other locations, identical buses, identical charging infrastructure, identical route conditions and two different buses get different efficiencies and that's just based on the driver. And whether they're really good at using the braking or if they stop and start really um roughly. And so there's a lot of things that can impact it. You know, we're going to see a reduced range in, in the winter. We know that, but these, these buses, this bus model, we have them running in Maine right now. So that they'll be in an environment that is similar to what, to what yours are.
I don't know if this has any budget feedback, I'm more curiosity. So I go through tires much faster on my electric vehicle because of the regenerative braking.
So it, it, so it's an interesting question. Um we haven't seen it yet. I, I wouldn't be surprised if over time we potentially see some impacts in, in tire wear. You know, there are certain tires that are specs for these buses, um because they are heavier and, and because of the, the braking and whatnot. I don't have anything conclusive to tell you that we will see more tire wear and tear. But if you ask me two or three years from now, I, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if we, if we did, honestly.
Although tires, large, large vehicle tires are harder, they're a harder um right? They're, they're much harder and denser than what you see on regular auto vehicles. So um they usually will last longer amount of years than mine ones, right? I mean, what do we do with our, with our fleet now? I mean, three, four?
Yeah, probably about four years. We rotate. So in the winter months, we put studded tires on our school buses.
Right.
So we're going to have a longer lifespan because, you know, we are rotating the tires, uh you know, November to, say, April, before the the regular rotary background.
Because of our icing on the hill.
Interesting question.
Any other questions from board members? Anything from the public? Well, thank you guys for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Rachel. And everybody has your contact information, so I'm going to encourage the board members um to reach out perhaps directly and CC me if they do with questions. Everybody gets the answers.
Yeah, I just want to be, yeah, on the safety, like safety. I know we talked about fires, but just like crash rates, I'm sure that's probably pretty stuck and probably but just something like that to make sure that.
Absolutely. Good. Did you want to speak to that quickly?
So, so they have to go through all the same um safety certifications and uh level of testing that the diesel buses do. Um there's, they don't get any kind of benefit or anything like that.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for joining us, Stacy and Rachel and Ryan.
No pressure, Billy, right? Although you're welcome to say if you'd like. I think I'm good. All right. Good night, everybody.
I think if you don't know, that, that his wife was a wonderful teacher here at least, will probably keeps him informed of what's going on. And I will just note for the board that um there is two brochures attached, the brochures that I've shared with you. Okay, are also attached here to the board docs. And the fuel spusses, third block Thomasville. Um and then the in-charge spec sheet is also online, so if you look at that, if there are any questions. If you want to, if you want for us to arrange uh the ability to go on a, a visit to one of their other locations that has the buses, um I'm happy to do that as well.
Will we take a bus to get there?
What? Can you take a ride up there? Yeah, they haven't been married. They haven't been married for a couple of years. Actually, they were the first site to go on.
Is Julie, I've been asked this while she's on, Julie, the, the bus company, the whatever brand model that we would be getting?
Yes. No, the two, yes, the spec sheet you have online are the ones that we're looking at. And there are, I think, I think they're gone now, but there are three main manufacturers. Okay, um they have found, and I believe Tony, they placed, because they've done this all over the country, they're a nationwide company. Um I believe they've used some of each different manufacturer and they feel that this is the best one um right now for the technology that runs. Um I also have attached in the board docs, the five-year extension proposal. We were a little disjointed this year on, on rolling this out because of the holiday. So as they mentioned, the only thing holding it up is whether we want to move forward or not. We do not have a vote on this tonight. So I'm going to say that we should probably be sure to place um you know, place a, a vote yes or no on the January one when we do the hearing. So that we can know if we're going to move, which buses will move forward. Because if we say no and we move forward with all diesel, then, you know, the numbers that you have are in there. They work either way.
Okay, I believe at the last meeting, we were told that there was a deadline to respond to the grant and that we had an order in January.
They, they did the extension on the deadline.
Okay, so, but I, I understand that STA had an order in January. Is that deadline extended as well so that if we?
Not at this point. So we would need to make a, we would need to make a decision. I'll double check that. But I think we would need to make a decision in January on whether to move forward or not. I, I I think we can ask for another extension. I'm not sure of that. I don't recall from reading all the literature. There may be another extension.
And our next meeting is January eighth, so it's pretty early.
And that's, that's plenty of time, but, but if if we're not confident yet to make a decision and we want to ask if there's an ability to extend, I can ask that question.
I know a lot of the money originates with the Environmental Protection Agency. It's already, that's already been spent, correct? I'm just concerned that
Five year, it was a five year, and this year we're coming up on round four. I believe there's one more year, one more year of rounds.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, exactly.
I think we, if this is something we want to do, we don't want to wait past a certain date in January to take advantage of it.
And I think the data are, like, my opinion is that the data are here and it's fine. They asked me, um when we were having the conversations about putting the information together, um whether or not there would be a vote tonight. And I said there wouldn't because you need time to digest it, look into it, be comfortable with it, right? So the, the January hearing really is a good time, I think, to have that updated conversation or follow-up conversation. And we're then happy to come back for that meeting. And then you'll, you hopefully, you know, then I'll find out whether you can do an extension.
Does anyone feel like there's any more specific information they need before they can make a decision? Can I move on, write in the bottom of the budget?
Sure. Okay, this is going to look very similar to all the ones that we've done together in the past.
I think maybe all. I think it sets the stage that for all of the next awesome. Okay, great, thanks. Oh, and I just love seeing myself on that big screen. So we're starting with the attachment, but everybody who wants to print out or needs to print out. This is someone called um Creating the Ray School Budget or the attachment is called Ray Admin HSB, so Hanover Schoolwork Budget Presentation. And I just, I don't think I need to go through all of this. I'm not going to go through all of this. But what I hope that you see when you look at this attachment is the amount of thought and iteration that went into creating the budget that you're going to hear moving forward. And, you know, what you see and what you hear in many of the other um attachments is the numbers and that's important, but we also wanted you to know what the story was. And also to take you through year two of zero-based budgeting and share some of those reflections, as I promised I would um in the previous meeting that was the, the smaller meeting um with the budget committees and the Hanover Financing Committee uh representatives. So the first couple of slides just detail uh the process that we had internally. It doesn't include all of the other meetings that we had with various folks. But what did we do as a, as a school team here? Um and I, I wanted to highlight that because I wanted to highlight that it's inclusive. So even though we have budget reps from every one of our teams, um everyone is invited to all of our budget meetings and encouraged to attend. Um and everybody receives, receives the slides from the budget meetings. Um so it is an inclusive process and it's supposed to be transparent both inside the school, but then also outside of the school, which is why we decided to put um this Creating the Ray School Budget Presentation together. Uh this was year two of following to the best ability uh that we had, uh zero-based budgeting. Last year I called it kind of a light touch to zero-based budgeting because it's hard. And this was year two and it was still hard. You'll see that reflection at the very end. It was still hard. And I think it will continue to be challenging, but budget generally is challenging. This is just challenging in a different way. Um so as a reminder to everybody, when we're doing this zero ba- based budgeting, we're really talking about the story that a person or an organization's budget tells. A reflection we had last year, right? The first time through the process is the hardest, so we're breaking the mindset of, but we've, we've always had X amount of money to operate. And instead reconsidering what functions do we need to operate and then how much do those functions really cost? Um another way to say that is that, you know, in year two, just continue to think about think about like what we need, not just what's been done for. Oh, we've always had the X amount of money for supplies. So let's just go ahead and move that over for next year. We've always had X amount of money for, you know, books, um testing protocols, presentations, field trips. No, you're starting from zero every year. And you might see that the things that you valued last year will get moved over. But you also might see that there are other opportunities to either reduce redundancies um or try something different or move on to the next part of a strategic plan when you're starting from zero every time. I'm not following these slides, but sorry. Thank goodness I made them, right?
I know where you are. I'm with you.
So um so as we set the stage for this, you know, we sent our, our reps and anybody else that attended out to um their teams with the task presented in front of you, you know, share all of this information, come back with a proposal, proposal. Don't simply move forward line items. You know, think, what do we really need and avoid and reduce the tendency to stockpile resources, right? Like, oh, we better buy, this is not a great example, but I, I better buy all of the pencils this year in case we don't have pencils next year, right? Now, what do we need and then what do we budget for it? And then we also encourage folks to think about hopes and dreams. Um and as they're thinking about the hopes and dreams though, to be able to articulate how that supports mission, how that supports school vision and how it supports the S U seventy strategic plan. Um and if they had those sort of hopes and dreams to make sure that they came prepared to tell the story or their rationale. Um we also, when we went through this, this year, uh reminded folks to keep in mind that we value people over stuff. And that this year we would be seeing the impact of um the increase from the collective bargaining agreement in year two for our certified staff numbers. Um so if as a school, you know, we're continuing to value people over stuff, we also need to keep in mind that people will be valued in this budget. They're already valued and that's going to take part, a part of the budget already before we even start putting other things on the table. Um and then we also reminded folks that we have other funding sources. So if you're thinking about something big, hoppy and dreamy and maybe doesn't quite fit in a clear, concise, connected way into mission, vision, um or the strategic plan, that explore other things too, that we can other funding sources that we can use to enrich the experience of our students while they're here with us at the Ray School. Um so folks went off and they did their thing and they created their budgets. And then they came back and the task during our internal meeting number two was, all right, tell us your story. Um share the specifics and tell us your story. And then as a group, we thought through, you know, what are the themes that we noticed? What are the wonderings that we have about the budget that we've created, all the pieces that went into it? Um we talked through enrollment projections, any next steps and reminded folks about the budget timeline. The all of the next slides, I'm not going to go through all of them, but all of the next slides are what folks shared. Um the stories that are coming out of each of our teams. And they're just really interesting because you see differences, but then you also see themes and those similarities. And they're just really interesting, because you see differences, but then you also see themes and those similarities, um, which will bring us, I encourage you to read through them, because people work really hard on these stories, but kinda brought us to the end. So, scrollly, 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 scroll, all of the teams, um, all the way down to sort of the key takeaways for year two. So, it's almost all the way to the end.
Alright, I'm getting there, scrolling quickly.
Yes.
So, so people can get snapshots here. Oh, yeah. Oh, gosh. Screwed that bit. Look at that string. Right? So, yeah, it was great, like, every single section and department really went off and did their thing.
Yeah, and this is, you know, while we're getting there, it's like, this is, um, this is year two. And so this is still hard, and this is still new. And with any kind of new process, including budget, um, there will be, you know, the early kind of, early adopters that are ready to go, it makes sense, let's do this thing. And then other folks that are like, oh, I, I question your sanity, Lauren, but like, I'm gonna go along with it. And then other folks that are, you know, still trying to understand, you know, why, the why behind it. And so in this spectrum of folks and understanding and, and buy-in around this, we have a lot of really cool stories. Um, and, and we also have, you know, various levels of buy-in at this point, but we're all moving together. And that budget shows that, and these stories represent that. Um, so talking through the key takeaways, I've said it a couple times now, but gosh, this is still challenging, because even as you're starting from zero, you have this little thing in the back of your head that's going, but what if I forget something? I'm not looking necessarily at last year's budget proposal, like, what if I forget something? So, we've had a lot of talks about, yeah, so what if we forget something? Or what if we didn't budget for X, Y, Z scenario? Um, and, you know, the answer to that is that we make it work. And within the budget that we have, we may need to make some decisions about where we've allocated some funds, um, to meet the needs that we didn't necessarily know that we would have as we move forward, and that is budget. Um, what I hope that you'll see is that there was intentional consideration about alternate funding sources. Um, another takeaway that we had is that folks are starting to, it's not like, you know, a hundred percent yet, but we are all starting to think about budget earlier in the year, versus being like, oh my gosh, it's August, time to create a budget again. Right in the course of the school year, there are things that you're thinking, um, that are short-term and long-term. And having the strategic plan is really helpful with that, so thinking about budget earlier. Um, we're continuing to work on articulating our alignment with mission, vision, and strategic plan. Um, that we're continuing conversations that have been really productive around eliminating redundancies. Um, I mentioned this, the conversations about the what-ifs, and just a reminder to folks that we budget for what we know. Um, we are further refining our thinking around simply moving money forward. And in various parts of the budget, you can see like all in around zero-based budgeting, and then certain areas that are not quite there yet. Um, and, uh, thinking about budget and, you know, multi-year, um, kind of tiers now, versus thinking, okay, we're creating next year's budget. Well, we're creating next year's budget, but how is that gonna impact the following years? What are we not doing next year that we need to be considering? Um, through strategic planning and mission and vision in the following years? If we can't do it next year, what is our plan in the following years, and therefore in the following budgets? Um, and then a general feeling that just hearing each other's budget stories helps us understand each of the teams within the school, and what we stand for together. And it's really a way to, um, unite us moving forward. Um, and so then I would encourage you in the, you know, the final slide, to think through our, our final reflections here. And, uh, I, I would just end with saying that, um, each year, we have a budget guideline, or like a cap increase. And what we talk about as a staff is, think of the amazing year where nobody needs to tell us that we have a cap, because they trust us, the community trusts us, the board trusts us, to present a budget that accurately describes what we need, and nothing more. Um, so that's sort of like the dream, will it ever happen? Who knows? But in moving in that direction, what we're trying to do is build that trust, be transparent in our process, be really thoughtful about what we're doing, um, focus our efforts in mission, and vision, and strategic planning. Um, yeah, and moving forward together. And we continue to see the benefits, especially here in year two, um, even though it's hard. We continue to see the benefits, uh, and we'll continue to use this process moving forward. I hope that you see the stories reflected in the numbers that you're about to see.
Thank you, Lauren. Any questions for Lauren, specific to the zero-based budgeting process or mindset? Tony?
Um, I noticed that a number of grades said, we're prioritizing field trip service, uh, class experiences. Um, and to me, that was, you know, those seem like extras to me, not the focus. So, it's like, oh my gosh, like, what's the budget gonna be? This is the center of their budget, and what they highlight. Um, but it's actually half what it was last year.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't, the slide doesn't seem to really, I mean, in a way seems not to reflect that it might be a big percentage of their classroom budget, I, and that's why it's centered. But can you explain the drop, I guess? I'm, I'm pleased, because I was like, oh my gosh, like, are we, how much money are we spending on field trips? Like, that seems like a really nice bonus thing for a well-resourced school, but not what's the focus of a grade year.
Yeah, so, okay, sure, so, um, a couple of layers that I wanna address. Even though it might feel like, um, a bonus, the way that field trips are chosen by teams across the school really, um, are, are a, a supplement and a continuation around the learning that's happening that's aligned with standards. So, it's bringing that learning to life, and whether it's that we go out to our outdoor classroom, which we are so fortunate to have here, or transport students to another place where they can really see this learning come to life, rather than it being like, just a fun experience, or something that is not connected to the learning that's happening. I would say it's not just in like an added special bonus, it's another way that teachers are really intentionally trying to bring learning to life. Um, and so that being said, our teachers don't want to lose the focus on experiences that are happening outside in the community through field trips, but are also cognizant of the competing priorities that we have, especially in the strategic plan around things like, you know, curriculum documentation, the programs that we've been implementing, um, the resources that we need around assessment. And as they're thinking about the field trips, and still wanting to communicate to the board the importance of the field trips, they're also within the, but their, their team budgets navigating, um, properly allocating funding within their budget for those other things as well. So, we're not gonna see a huge increase in field trips, because there is, um, an understanding that we also need to be putting our funds towards these other things that are really important in the strategic plan. Because believe it or not, the strategic plan doesn't necessarily name field trips, as one of the things that we're prioritizing moving forward. But, um, having, you know, equity in, in learning access, and having, um, multiple pathways for students to learn are part of that, and therefore also valued when it comes to field trips. Did that answer part of the question?
It, it, it answered most of it. I'm just wondering about the drop by fifty-three percent in field trip budget over last year's.
Some of that was because, I'm sorry, I can't-
Yeah.
Some of that is because when they were budgeting, if the, if the opportunity doesn't require travel, some of the folks are coming into them, so it's been moved to the artist lines up a lot, right?
That's right, yeah. That's right, so some of the, thank you, Jamie, I was trying to figure out why there was a drop there. Yeah, it's, it's because we had, um, not quite allocated the money in the correct line. So, the, yes, we moved some, some field trips to artists, um, in residence. And that includes the fifth grade field trip, which is a big one. Um, we were calling the nature's classroom experience a field trip. Um, and it's actually because they come to us, it's considered an artist or a residency, so it's moved into that line.
So, if you look at the budget, if you're looking at the long line item budget, you would look at the eleven hundred, three hundreds, Teresa?
Yeah.
Eleven hundred, three hundreds, and you might see increases up in those ones, because they redirected them, because they don't have travel involved.
Yeah, as I went through, and, um, as, as the teams presented their budgets, there wasn't a single team that was like, oh, we're not gonna do as many field trips anymore. Field trips are still a main thing, but where those live in the budget may have changed a little bit.
Do you have any discussion of bringing back the fifth grade overnight field trip? No? Okay.
I know. There are folks on both sides of that.
Any other questions specific to Lauren? Right, thank you for that intro, we appreciate it.
Okay, yes, very nice, thank you. That was awesome. So, again, uh, you've seen this presentation, there's not much you could do before. Um, and, um, the first slide, we've included all the administration who somehow had a hand in helping to build different parts and departments of the budget. Um, we've also included all of our school board members' names here. And, um, I'll point out that Antonio Berry and, uh, Kim Hudman are your two Handover Budget Committee members who met with the, um, administration and principals on two different occasions at this point, maybe, yeah, three.
At the Handover committee.
Yes, at the Handover committee, so there are two members involved, so I can thank you. Um, yeah, so we've had great discussions. Our last meeting was on November twenty-first. Um, this does have changes to it, uh, and I'll point them out. Um, so, I went searching for some newer information to share, and I have two slides here. Um, and this is just a great picture of all of the students, and there's volunteers, and there's meeting members who were here for a special function along with the, um, I think it was firefighter, firefighters, or something. Um, and they were doing it in the gym on the other side of our barriers here. Looks like they were having a wonderful time, and it must have been around Halloween, because it looks like we got frosting, though. And then, again, some other slides of just, you know, what it's all about, what we do here at the Ray Elementary School, right? And the vision that, you know, there to be one Red, and to empower these young minds, right? To think outside the box, to look to help them, you know, make a difference in the world in a positive manner. And to allow them to dream and, uh, be the next inventors of the next century for us, you know? For the next decade, the, the next few decades. So, this is a great picture of them playing all those wonderful instruments in the string class here, in this very room. Uh, and some of the kiddos bringing, uh, foodstuffs down to the haven. Uh, another, um, very important part of what goes on here at the Ray School about giving back to the community and helping others. Um, as Lauren mentioned in one of her slides, um, we meet in August, that's when the budget building starts. We do what's called the quick model. The quick model is based on assumptions we may know at that point in time, and if we don't know, we make projections. Uh, based on the quick model we looked at in August, the board, um, you know, they encouraged us all to look at the strategic goals, and, uh, to try to put monies towards those type of investments. So, we stay in line with where we want to go. And then, you know, there's, it's a very, it's a larger document, I just pulled out some excerpts. So, I would tell people, please go out and take a look at the document in total. Um, and at the end of the day, when they looked at the quick model, they thought, let's target the increase of five percent or less over the prior year's budget. Um, they wanted us to keep in mind about moving beyond the status quo of the model projections. And they also gave us a few bullet points about improvement considerations. Uh, they're listed here, I won't read them all off. You know, some of them are very important to programming, like E L A, expansion of, uh, English Language Arts, multi-tiered systems. Um, we did, as a, I will point this out, we did, as a whole district, look at and discuss perhaps bringing on a one-point-O F T E social worker and sharing it across all four schools, three districts. And, uh, we did in the very end decide not to include that in this projected year's budget, but to perhaps look at that in the next budget out. Each one of the individual schools within the three districts has been, uh, making provisions within their own staffing levels to address some of the concerns that have been raised. Um, and I would let the principals speak to those, because they can do it much better than I can. Um, buildings and grounds improvements, we are working through a capital improvement plan at the S A U level. Uh, so we'll be probably looking into many of those different ideas in five years. Um, early, again, in September, we meet with the administration to take a look at enrollments uh, and forecasting it forward. As Lauren mentioned, the enrollment right now, as of your slide, and you're picking up two more, is too higher than what we have here as an actual. Um, and so it looks like actual's gonna be sitting at four sixty-eight-ish, um, by the end of maybe, what, next week or January? Who knows, right? So, what we do in order to project forward is that we take a look at historical averages, and we make adjustments as the students move up in their cohorts. And so sometimes they'll gain students, and sometimes they'll lose them, and we've done that. Some of the numbers might seem a little bit lower, and then we pointed out that very small kindergarten class that came in at forty-six in twenty-three, twenty-four prior year. Um, we rebounded this year with a kindergarten class of seventy-four. Uh, and I looked back through, and that's a really great size for us. We've had approximately four other kindergarten classes above seventy, and we had one that actually reached eighty, um, since I've been here anyway. So, doing all of that, projecting it forward for next year, we're looking at four sixty-eight. If I thought about it, or it might be up around four seventy or four seventy-two, if we were going to, uh, you know, keep track of all the students that are coming along. So, that's twenty-three above what we projected for F Y twenty-five. And it will be, uh, twenty-eight student increase going into twenty-six, when you compare it to the twenty-five projection. Okay? So, was four sixty-three right now, and we projected four forty. If you look at projection to projection, it's four forty to four sixty-eight. Okay? Alright, so we move on from that, as an administration, still in September, in that same discussion, we look at staffing, district staffing. There is a wonderful exhibit that has been spanned in eight. Yes, Exhibit Eight, thank you, Kim.
I was gonna call that, thank you for it.
Yes, absolutely. Um, that, I will say, Principal Amrane, uh, designed, and it came out very, very well. And it points out all the breakdowns of where these numbers are. I will say that there are not a lot of changes, there, there are smaller changes. But in light of the fact that we're picking up twenty-eight students, projection to projection, we will be putting on a twenty-seven classroom teacher. There are some F T E movements, so, so in the end, we are actually down, uh, a ten, basically a ten in F T Es. Uh, most of that pickup that offsets the one-point-O classroom teacher would be from the interventionist slash tutor realm. Okay? And the others are just movements between, um, um, your educational aids that are dispersed throughout your school here. Okay? So, we move on from that, and I just wanted to take an opportunity here, because we were talking about staffing, to point out that Hanover's Ray School won the Blue Ribbon, National Blue Ribbon School Award. Um, I think, if you haven't heard about it, I would encourage you to go out and take a look and read about it. That doesn't happen without really great quality staff, uh, who put in a lot of extra hours and time into the program running here at the Ray School. So, who knows, to the Ray School staff and the administration here, you're doing a great job. I then, or we then, take the budget proposal. Um, it's, it's nice to look at it by function, which is like by department, it tells a story, right? Similar to what Lauren's saying about they tell a story. So, you can look at this, and as I mentioned, we've had some changes in our budget bill from the one on version two, which we shared on, uh, on the twenty-first. Actually, it was built through the eighteen, we shared it on the twenty-first. There were then some changes that came in, uh, that this version is dated December eighth. Okay? You can see there's regular educational changes there. That is due in part to the fact there were seven track advancements that came in, approximately fifteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Um, there are associated benefits that go along with that, right? Taxes, national retirement, et cetera, that's about five thousand dollars. Um, we also had redirected on the other side, uh, half the F T E, as you saw, from a regular ed to special ed, um, for the behavioral interventionists, because there's- for the behavioral interventionists, because they're spending half of their time in differing, differing orders. So, that will go opposite direction. The other changes were in special education. We made some adjustments because of some retirements that were coming through on folks who are sitting at the very tip of the top of the scale. And so, as we look at our hiring processes, we normally are hiring in around masters, next level up, middle range. So, we made a few adjustments to the budget down in that area. And that also had effects on health and other benefits. We had an ESL retirement that we made an adjustment with. We also had a year-over-year change for election on health, that was a large change there. And then, in the 2400, you're gonna see there's changes there as well. The school board and SAU services also went up because the school board, in between the meeting on the 21st and this meeting, the SAU board set their budget and ratified it. And when they did that, they made one change, two, two changes, excuse me. One of them was for the CFP project that we had 50,000, I think, budgeted, and we needed a little bit more, now about $10,000 more than that. And then, actually, it was 18,000, we had 42,000 budgeted. And then, the other part of it, which Ray only shares a piece of that, right, based on formula. The other change was for market-driven compensation committee changes to some of the upper-level management's wage levels. So, that comes in, in the school board, that's the new services line that went out. And then, the school administration lines where your retirees' wages, as people retire and they have a retirement package, those are charged in the 2400 lines. We had an additional retiree that came in and we processed, and that, those dollar amounts, they are in the amount of about $26,000, so, between health, bike, and religious. So, that was the bulk of the changes between the two versions. Then, we look at it, I like to also look at it by object, because that's the other side of the story. It makes it very quick and easy for you to look at the budget and see where the increases are. Object is more like what we're paying for subjects, right? So, all 100 lines are teachers' wages or other wages. All 200 are benefits or payroll taxes, staff development, you can see as you look down the list, right? So, you can see that we're almost at 5% for teacher and specialist salaries. That kind of makes sense because we did have a settled agreement. There was 4% put on the basis of the wage scale, so that kind of ties. There were changes in personnel being hired and leaving, so there's probably some up and downs on the salary levels, on the, on the wage scale. To go along with that would be payrolls, taxes, and benefits. Those obviously go up as salaries go up there, really. The retiring wages, I spoke to that, that those have gone up. And then, you can see where we've got some other differing changes in levels. The big one that will draw your interest would be the purchase property and maintenance services, down 184. That's directly correlated to some of the salary, other salary lines up above. That would be custodial wages that we reinstated because we were outsourcing in the prior year for two, two and a half positions, and we've been able to fill some of those. So, we're moving that dollar amount back to the line in which it lives, okay? The other one is Brett mentioned, is tuition out of district. That's for the high school level, and that's turning up about 233,000 there. Due fees, contingency, and debt, that is actually debt schedule savings as we move up in our payments. Okay, moving on. Summary by category, this is another way to look at the budget so that you can see the direct operating expenses for pre-K through five. We carved out anything like the special ed tuition with capital expenditures, the debt service, and the transfers in and out. So, what we're directly spending on actual program for the students, okay, without those involved. And the increase there is 3.84% year-over-year. These summaries, most of these summaries, I have included the three warrant articles that we've been doing year-over-year, which would be the board salaries, the bridgeman fund, and the $100,000 to the reserves. The, the bridgeman fund and the $100,000 have offsetting revenues, okay? All right. Significant changes, you're probably very familiar with summaries. We've done a significant changes sheet now twice, we've updated it. If you want really good detail, go back out to the Budget Committee sections, they're posted there, and all of the significant changes are within those write-ups. Within the budget book, which is what I'm holding here, it's also posted, okay, for today. Within that, there is a narrative which tells you all about each one of these significant changes and it tracks it by the line and number. I could bore you with all the details and read through every single one of them if you would like. But truly, I think we've discussed most of them. Anything with salaries, if it has to do with teacher lines, there's 4% on base, there's also track advances, and there's steps. For other salaries, we are in negotiations right now with the support staff, so nothing has been added to those lines unless it was an FTE change and those were trending down for those folks. Or it was non-union, non-union administrators are 2% increase, non-union, I'm gonna get this backwards, non-exempt are at 2.5%. We have very few non-union 1%, so those numbers are pretty small. Property, equipment, and technology, they are looking at, you know, turn it over, they have a molecular rotation for the equipment that they use within the school and classrooms. All the payroll taxes and benefits. We also experienced a 12.9% increase in the health insurance rates. So, those are all the way through this document, other than the custodial section, which is also under negotiations right now because custodial and non-union are on a different plane. As somebody mentioned earlier, the build trip line is down. Some of that was conscious about trimming, some of that got moved up into the artist lines. I'll say for the significant changes, our threshold was $10,000, unless it was relevant to other questions, okay? If anybody has any specific, we've spoken to most of these. Special ed transportation is down 65,000, that has to do with the fact of movement from students to a different situation. Site building improvements were down 105,000, that was a conscious decision due to a lot of the work that we had gotten done, or due A to a lot of the work that we have gotten done the last two years, but also B because we're looking at a capital improvement plan, which is gonna help us to prioritize what some of the larger projects might be. I will also say, Exhibit, you know what it is? Exhibit 12 has all of what we have planned for projects here at the Ray School. I won't say all, but most of the good ones, right? And then, I, as I mentioned before, we have, well, and we did speak earlier about the difference in cost for transportation and supplies. I still think, based on what we're trending right now for diesel, nobody has a crystal mall, we may be able to trim that down a little bit, maybe 10 grand, I was taking a look at that today, and diesel pricing is down, but who knows? In a year and a half, it's still will be, right? Because we're a year and a half down. But, um, anyway, that's where the effect and changes in what we've projected with the five-year extension on the original agreement lies, okay? And superintendent services, we discussed about the SAU and the portion of Ray School's piece of that. As I mentioned before, I did also include, this one does not, I'm sorry. This one does not include the money that we sent to the building maintenance fund or the bridgeman fund. That's why the figures here are lower, okay? Revenues and net assessment, the warrant articles 2, 3, and I'll fix that little thing where I didn't jingle through it. And seven, which is the $100,000 transfer from surplus, which you may change going in January. I have carried that here and shown it. Anything in salmon color, or tan, whatever it looks like to you, is subject to change, right? They're based on projections at this point in time. Keeping in mind on the revenues, we don't set revenues until October. So, we do have a ability and a chance to change them or adjust them accordingly when we know more, right before we send a paycheck. So, right now, balance carry for it, as was mentioned, we offset taxation with almost $1.7 million last year, Brett spoke to why. The bulk of that was from having 12 open positions, I think, plus or minus, in the special ed realm. So, and then, we had last year transferred 100,000 in the surplus. Handover Water Works is expected to go up a little bit, the interest on investments has been trending up, we're still in the 4.5% range. The adequacy aid right now is trending up from the state's early projection, 197,000. Keeping in mind, they normally cannot lower that more than 5%. Freedom account, there's a phase-out payment there, it's going down from what we had. Catastrophic aid, Brett mentioned that, we're, we're being very cautious on that, but we will know before tax rate is set. So, if the, if that goes up, we'll adjust it. Federal sources Medicaid is trending down. Medicaid will trend down if your expenditures trend down. And there's a whole host of other information that is tied to Medicaid reimbursement. Couple of years ago, they made it much more difficult to file for Medicaid reimbursement, requiring doctors' signatures on many of the, on much of the information. So, after that went into effect, a lot of districts Medicare or Medicaid reimbursements went down. And then, just carrying the bridgeman re-erfied now there. So, net assessment, actual, when you net the revenues against the projected expenditures, is 13,393,674. That's up $622,172, at just under 5%. You can see we have married, because you can't do a tax rate without looking at the Dresden assessment, this is as of December 8th. I will say to everybody right now that the Dresden School District budget rollout will be next Tuesday. The number as stated here will be adjusted. We have met this week, administrators, and we have some adjustments going into the budget downward. So, at this point in time, and that will be also bringing information to the school board for some decision-making about where we're gonna be with that. So, that number as of, was as of 12, 8. That's up just over 2% for, no?
Yeah, and a little foreshadowing, right? For decision-making, it could go back up, so it might go down and go back, so I just wanted...
It could go either way, all options, absolutely.
Absolutely. Administrators, I think, are bringing adjustments for you to contemplate down. But there are, to Kim's point, other strategic initiatives that have been discussed, which may, so Matthew, I'll give it to you. There is, thank you, yes. So, all in all totaled is 32,729,000, let's say, or a change of just over $1 million at 3.18%. The tax rate reduction, I'm gonna say here for everybody in case when we read this, does not include all warrant articles for union-negotiated settlements. We have two being negotiated right now. Larger of the two is the support staff agreement. We do have a TA, the board, the Handover Board will discuss in executive session later tonight. Then, it will need to go to the Dresden Board for discussion as well next Tuesday. So, the numbers on that won't be shared out until after next Tuesday, even though you know they are. So, the Handover projected tax rate here is on what we know now with a, a projected now, and I cut that off, I'll fix that, increase of 10 million. Now, this is net assessed valuation for the Handover. And so, you can see in '24, '25 what it is. And then, '25, '26, we're projecting $10.32 on local tax rate. Then, what happens is with the state's school tax rate, it's called SWEPT. The state takes all of our valuations throughout, all of the state of New Hampshire. They equalize our valuations by playing with the rate, okay? So, by playing with the rate, they make it fair or equitable on a portion of what's raised locally. Still raised locally, they don't send it to us. Adequacy aid is sent to us. So, right now, based on our nav up of 10 million and the numbers we have out from the state, because they can adjust the SWEPT number, which they haven't yet, we're looking at a pending increase on the state's budget. So, all in all, we're looking at a 33 cent increase or just below 3%. Okay, just as a recap, as of this build, excuse me, our expenditures are looking to trend, this is direct expenditure, at just over 4%, or 644,000. That does include more in Article 2, 3, and 7. 2 is where stipends, 3 is bridgeman, and 7 would be if you wanted to transfer money from surplus. The revenues are up just about 0.74%, or 21,000, 22,000. That would include if we were to offset the $100,000 with surplus money, which is noted there. The Handover net assessment would be up just below 5% at 4.87, or $622,172, with Dresden's net assessment up 2.04%, or $386,371. There'd be an estimated tax rate difference of just below 3% at 2.84%, or 33 cents. Again, doesn't include two new settlements. Sharing with everybody what the other, that I know of right now, two potential warrant articles might be. One would be support staff agreement, one would be service staff agreement. Historically, support staff spent three years, historically, service staff spent two. Doesn't mean they will, they will out, but this is the, the graph of those. And then, again, just to share some cheerfulness at the end of our presentation. This was, I thought was awesome, it was an awesome exercise that you've done here, and, you know, we were handing out docs, and they, and they included all of us in the board and administration, right? And, and we're, some of us sat here like, where are we supposed to do this doc, right? Right, and I just love the quote that you had, just, just make Americans see where it takes you, right? Because that's how a doodle starts, that's how a thought starts. So, I love this, it's a beautiful board here at the Ray School, and just look at the amazing thoughts that people... I don't know if I completed mine, I don't remember, anyway. Oh, you did, okay, so, so I hate a lot of books...
I'll do that for you.
Oh, yeah, some, no, I understand you. So, um, so that's it for our presentation, our first presentation to the full school board. And happy to entertain and along with my fellow administrators, any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Damian, well over to you, and everyone else into it, we appreciate it very much. Any initial questions by board members? You know, we talked a lot about this before in previous meetings.
I'm on Budget Committee, but I have a question. On the buses, so not included, and could they be a warrant article, the funding, just...
They're built in. So, because they're done as a lease purchase agreement through the five-year extension. So, the next step for moving to electric over diesel would, it would require the board to make a statement that they support it because it's, it's a grant, right? And it's a grant that's being awarded, an offsetting amount that's being awarded. So, that's why we require the board to say, yes, we want to move and accept that grant to three buses for an electric portion of the fleet, as opposed to just a diesel or reordering a diesel fleet.
But, but grant doesn't cover the full class, so wouldn't it be... But, but grant doesn't cover the bulk class, so wouldn't it be a, the contract would be a hundred and fifty, I can't remember how much.
No, they're absorbing that. Their STA is absorbing that, the difference, the fifty-five thousand dollar difference. And they're absorbing it because they're gonna own the infrastructure. So, and they're doing that for two reasons, cause Lee, I said to them, well, why would you do that? Right? Like, they said, I'm gonna ask you, why would you do that? You know, and, and, um, Logan and Rachel said that with infrastructure projects where, uh, the school districts don't own them. They're not on our land because we couldn't come to, uh, you know, we don't have a lot of land, first of all, but, um, it was really nowhere that was advantageous to place them, um, that they will own that infrastructure. It's so, because the infrastructure will be good past five years. It's also that STA, as a company, really is embarking on the availability of moving diesel out and bringing electric in. They were also one of the companies that were at the forefront of moving away from diesel fleets to propane fleets. Unfortunately, they had a very bad incident that occurred in Pierce, where somebody was, uh, killed from one, uh, going really bad. Um, uh, one of their workers. And so they moved a little bit away from that and are embarking more on the electric fleet, um, projects. So I, I think it's truthful that it fits within their, um, you know, the company's direction of trying to be a good partner with environmentalists and sustainability. So right now, it's, it's in whether we go with diesel because it's been projected at diesel rate, which is a hundred and twenty-five thousand approximately per bus.
Have another one coming?
No. Did you do, just even, okay?
Any other questions from board members? Anything from the public?
Um, and sorry, I'm not looking at any numbers. This is just off the top of my head. So, but I believe the year-over-year increase was budgeted at a, uh, at a fifteen percent increase from our bus transportation. So, eh, you know, is it what we're paying currently this year? No, right? It's, but we, we knew we were gonna, it was going to be a contract year this upcoming year, and we.
That's all.
It's okay. Um, so I, I was just saying that, we're talking year-over-year, right? So, you know, what's in the budget for transportation is about fifteen percent more than what we're paying this year. However, we also know that this budget year we're talking about is a re-contract year anyways, which tends to increase some of our expectations.
And wages because of the adjustment in wages from us having, um, moderate increases on some of the one-year.
Right, so I mean, so to say that they're absorbing all of the lease, you know. You know, and, and you're, if you're looking at kind of the cost and some of what they were saying is, you know, we need to have drivers frying the buses beforehand, well, that's extra time, you know, so, you know, I think there's some healthy skepticism in where these kind of rates would go.
They would have been the same if they were. I mean, we can stop and go out to bid.
No, I'm just, I'm.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
You know, it's a gift horse, right?
Sure, yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
We have to rate the process. And so, you know, it's just trying to understand the model because it's very different than what we have. Um, but I have, you know, electric buses are currently used in Hanover, they keep, so, you know, I just, it, it's not, it, it's not unusual, but it's new to us. So, yeah.
Absolutely.
Jerry, um, is our transportation contract when it's a renewal year, do we have, um, clarity and transparency on future year pricing?
Yes, it's a, it's a five-year agreement and it's listed on the, there's an attachment.
So I just wanna make sure that my understanding is correct. What you told us, what I thought I heard before, is that the financial outlay for this contract will be the same whether we vote yes on these plus electric buses or no. Is that?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no net budget impact for, or because of the grants and because of the partnership and the.
Correct.
Transparency and the multi-year pricing agreement. It is what it is. We can say yes and take the buses.
Yep.
Or we could, we could decline the grants and stick with what we have. And there will be, to this document, there will be no impact.
Correct, so what's in there now? So if you run the numbers on how many routes we have, just to be fully transparent, it's about three thousand dollars, yeah.
So if there's a lack of clarity, um, just to follow up, if there's a lack of clarity on how much this is actually going to, um, impact our vendor financially to implement this, they are accepting all of that impact, except.
Based on that projection because they've given us, uh, an addendum to our master agreement from two thousand sixteen, which I'm happy to post that too. But, um, yes, they've given us an actual projection for signature and they cannot change it.
So if someone needs to spend more time doing X, Y, Z because of the implementation of the new.
It can't be all this.
It's not, but, but the one thing that I did understand would be impacted that if we do take the electric buses and if our diesel consumption decreases, then we will have a net positive gain of potentially seven thousand dollars.
Absolutely, yeah, and, yeah.
So, so there's some potential small upside on an annual basis, and there's no negative that I can see. But if there is a negative, I do want to see it.
Well, to me, there's not a negative. The, the eight thousand savings wouldn't, at the Kim's point, wouldn't be this year. Because, because of the, how far out, right? When I initially started speaking to them in May, um, you know, had, had we, the ordering of this was sooner. It would have been within a year's time, right? So we could have potentially had them in by June and roll them out for September one.
Well, depending upon the time.
Sure, and so every, you know.
I just wanna make sure that there are no surprises.
To my, I mean, we have used them as a vendor for eight years, right? Um, we had used some of their administration with a different vendor prior, and it was the year before I came, but I heard it was horrible. There were multiple problems. Um, we've not had a problem with, to me, there's no downside. We've not had a problem with securing drivers. And when there were problems with drivers, we've been pretty good and prompt about moving them out. Um, you know, with, with the ability to continue routes, we were able to expand a route in, um, Hanover, a half a route in the morning because of H two being overloaded. Um, you know, they've been able to, for the most part, absorb all of our athletics. It's still challenging here and there, you know, because we have so many people that, but what a great problem, right? There's so many people that, uh, participate, right? It's great. Um, of course, that's not your cost, that's Dresden's cost. Um, you know, they're, they're responsive. They are responsive. They're a big company. They, as Rachel mentioned, when they call, people answer the phone, because they're big.
When did you have to say yours from yours to this?
January, so I would say in the January meeting, and if, you know, again, if there are more, you know, you're gonna leave here tonight, it's a lot of stuff to absorb, right? And it would be not fair to give you all this information and say, make a decision today, right? I get that, cause I wouldn't want to as a board member. And so by January's hearing, I'm hoping that we can, if there are still questions or concerns, or once you have a chance to digest it, play with the numbers, ask me questions, ask them questions. You know, let's get everything answered, right? And if we need to bring them back, let's bring them back.
This isn't a question, it's just an observation.
Sure.
I recall last spring that you were one of the most skeptical, cranky.
I know.
You, you were not.
Did you miss the meter, meeting where I said I was, I meant, I, I said that, I said, I was so skeptical about whether or not these are gonna be okay or not.
You're not letting me finish, I was going to comment. I was saying that you were in a very different place a few months ago. And so I am, in part, reassured by your your change of heart.
Yeah.
Because I know you're a little bit attentive to dollars. That's all. That was my comment.
Well, part of it is the dollars, right?
Yeah, yes, I mean, this decision is not saving any money.
I think.
So, e- even, you know, right, I, I think actually having it be an equal to our relative expectation of what a future contract would be is pretty surprising. But I think what, what is a limitation, right, is like thinking about, do we, if we ever have the question of expansion of the, you know, of our fleet. It sounds like there's not gonna be an infrastructure, there's probably not gonna be a federal grant funding, you know? And so, and I know that that's not what's on the table today, but it's just something for us to consider when we think about. Because you can imagine if these things, you know, go well, we wanna do more, you know, we have to have that discussion too.
So, and, and I mean, we have, we had some of those discussions. That was part of my earlier concern, right, is that, A, we didn't have room at any of our locations to, to do this, right? Um, I have had some conversations with folks at the town level about perhaps if they were looking at moving to a fleet, an electric fleet for their larger trucks. Would it make sense for the school district to try to get into a partnership if we were thinking of expanding, right? Because I think, I, I didn't get, um, I didn't get an early buy-in that they would have room to store a whole fleet of buses up at their townyard location, but I mean, it's a big site, right? So I think there's opportunity for expansion if that's the direction that both the town and the school district want to do as a joint venture. Because truly, STA doesn't care if there are still our provider. They don't care where you put that or who owns it, right? It's a matter of doing it where it makes sense. Um, you know, but that's, again, like Kim's saying, it's, it's getting late on the, on the thing tonight. But for future planning and strategic planning, that should be a part of the discussion. It's already a part of the discussion, I'm sorry, not to interject, sorry, not to interrupt you. It's already a discussion between myself and the maintenance director about anything that we may look to bring on, you know, for maintenance operation.
So the STA charging yard, is their electricity supplied by Green Mountain Power?
It is.
You know, so I'm not a Green Mountain Power client personally. But I know that a lot of the, the electricity around the town actually has different thresholds of where they get their power from in terms of like renewable energy or whatnot. And if it was in Hanover versus, I think, whatever rejection, we have access to Hanover community power, which is substantially cheaper, while giving higher quality, it's sort of percent of renewable.
So in having a conversation, there was a conversation, and I'm going to get you an answer because I don't wanna get it wrong. But we had a conversation about that between Yolanda, myself, Brian. I don't think Rachel was on the call, Stacy might have been on the call, about that. And I vaguely remember, I think Yolanda, I think you're on the call too, but Yolanda's saying that Green Mountain Power, Yolanda have better initiatives than, I'm sorry, but I'll give an answer.
I was surprised you were not.
Yeah, I have both, I have both elected companies myself, but, um, so, so let's get the answers. Okay.
Um, any other questions about the budgets for anyone, anyone in the public?
That's what, I mean, that.
Welcome, as I'm welcome on, we're getting on to your other stuff. But, um, Greg, I'm here with Finance Committee, and Don Dole, he's like, oh, we got, I'm good. We just wanted to say thank you very much for this invitation. Um, I wanted to contribute to the analysis and, and, uh, considerations. We look backwards and I wanted to comment on forward, I'm the president and then beyond that. So it was important for you to know that, uh, we looked at what we had commented on here last year and see if that got covered off, as well as whatever comments we made on the statement uh, regarding the, the budget. So as you know, we, we approved the, the budget as a committee unanimously. And within that statement, all the provisions that were in the budget, we, we agreed with. And they in particular mentioned that we, uh, agreed with the, uh, contract negotiation. And cited the, uh, institution of the zero-based budget there. So, uh, the other comment that was made in last year's meeting here had to do with, um, making sure that enrollment projections were keeping up with, with staffing. And, and so all of the things that we talked about, both in last year's meeting, as well as within our, our statement, have been aptly addressed, so well done on that. Uh, the thing that we will do now is we're actually meeting, uh, tomorrow as a committee. And so we'll have a chance to, uh, with all of the members of the committee, go over what we've heard tonight. Uh, Tony's our representative, of course, and we'll, we'll come back with any, uh, questions, uh, coming from that, uh, discussion. One, one point, um, just kind of a question and a kind of comment regarding then forward would be coming from, from your, your presentation. So, you know, one of the things that we did, um, in the statement, uh, last year, we just talked about, you had the, uh, the coach. That new position that came on board. And it looks like, within the presentation, that, um, there is a focus on quantifying results by the coach to, to ensure that the value is being, uh, received for the money that's being spent for how to position, but, but what the training is. And am I reading that correctly with some of these comments that the, the coaching is being delivered? But you're testing to make sure that those outcomes are what, what you're looking to achieve.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so one other comment is if you look at other, um, entries, I would, I would ask you to, to look further. Maybe it's just absolutely implied or, or assumed, understood. But I don't see educational outcomes being mentioned so much with, within the comments. And so for the value of the, uh, increase in the budget, certainly the value for, uh, the investment in staff, all of this, you want to have a return on the investment. And so, um, that would be something that I would say should be looked at.
Very helpful, thank you.
And Greg, a good person in that, at the la- the meeting last month. Yeah. That instructional coach, her name is Steph Harold, gave a, a talk presentation on how she, what she's doing, how she's doing it. How it's going so far, that's very good meeting to watch.
And, and it wasn't, it wasn't what, what I thought, but there's, there's an emphasis on outcomes.
Yeah, that was partially what, what she talked about, yes. So I'd encourage you guys to, to watch that from the November meeting, and it's.
Right, okay, great. Uh, and by the way, to, I think it's fair to say that, um, at this point, we have no, uh, major criticisms or anything with what's happened and what's been presented with the budget. So I don't expect you to be getting any surprises at all at the committee. And so I just wanted to, you know, quite open. We'll leave that to still for discussion, we're coming back with much, of course. But, um, that's, that's where we are today.
Thank you very much.
Now, we're gonna shift to the business required discussion, and first up is appointing an accounts table over Hoover. I believe it is Marcella and Tony, right? And prior to that, that was it, you and I? So if I have my math.
I was just appointed a couple of months ago.
But I know, it's not you the correct person.
Yeah, but I've only been doing it.
But we're shifting to quarterly now. Yeah. So I'm kind of giving, giving Harrison light glances right now.
It's nice.
All right. Okay, thank you very much. The Terran, we'll take that over. We'll make sure to get Kelly next. Uh, probably the next, I believe it's probably one or two weeks. It'll be like, as of tonight. Merry Christmas all. Thank you, folks, for coming on.
Try next week.
Try next week, yes. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
I think this is an issue of. Anyway, shifting along to the reading of policies. So these are all second readings that we discussed at Dresden and SAU in great detail, and I mean. There was some minor discussions in last week that did last month, I didn't miss that meeting. Any further discussions, just the second reading on all of these things?
On emergency planning updates. Uh, is this Jay or Lauren, Lauren?
Do we have to keep it up? So the attachment you're seeing is a poster that is, this is, this is called standard response protocol.
Right.
Which is a widely used um protocol for the language we use in emergency situations, so we've we've adopted this. And um, I would also, this is to give parents some idea of how we're responding to different um. Different safety issues in the in the schools. And we also, on our district website, on the main page, the very first option is to pull down our districts. The last item on that is safety, and if you are interested in learning more. Um, there's, we're also posting information there. We're being very careful to make sure that we're not revealing any information that's not already publicly available. So um, I encourage you, if you are interested, to take a look at that. Uh, we're, we're looking forward to making sure that we're all using the same terminology from building to building. That means that students who are training and all of this here at the race school will go on to the middle school and high school. We'll have the same same commands and the same actions that we take in an emergency situation.
Okay.
So, um, I I think we might have skipped an agenda, the discussion of potential warrant articles.
Oh. Shuts key, we did.
I stepped up too fast. That's been so emergency planning.
Yeah, yeah, I just said.
Lauren, if you have anything else to add, that's that's what we wanted to share tonight.
Cause Greg was being so good.
All right, any any comments on the emergency planning updates? See none, we'll ship back, they came to that nice patch. Uh, back to the warrant articles.
Yeah. So they've been uh hopefully updated, apparently I have some time, okay, recording, interview stuff.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And um, also the the board membership needs to be updated. I don't think Rick wants to do this anymore.
Oh, it's just, okay. Clearly one dollar, I'll get that fixed. We'll get that fixed, no worries, it's right on the. Updated on Dresden. I'll go back and I'll return, I don't know why, I did not figure it on him. If you see, so now you're gone, I'll retype the whole thing.
All right, so we know that one is pretty boilerplate.
Yep.
Two, we did this, we did change it to seventy-five, I believe, last year, previously standard forty. Does anyone have any concern with keeping it at forty, or keeping it at seventy-five, sorry? Or changing it higher or lower? Anyone?
No, actually, just to underscore, it's why I spoke to a member on the trustee of the trust fund, and I asked, is seventy-five still fine? This is, you know, just one member.
Right.
But they said totally fine, seventy-five is fine, so no concerns.
Good to know, given just one board members.
Three years.
All right, in terms of the salaries, haven't haven't changed those, anyone have any comments on salaries? Well, okay, the collective bargaining agreement for support staff will discuss later. Uh, service staff, I haven't heard anything much about that lately.
There's not much to discuss about that, we're trying to come up with dates.
Okay, we'll leave that then. In terms of the budget, we just talked about that, that's number six. Number seven, I see a big bolded four.
Right, so which one, right?
Which one was last?
Um, you didn't ask me that, I believe that you, maybe, maybe not, yes, it was the language.
Jamie, is there any strong reason to do one versus the other this year, given how they're looking so far, Ken, anyone?
I I personally would want maintenance.
Yeah.
Okay, maintenance.
Um, but you know, if you ask other administrators, they.
And you have a disagreement from over there?
Right, right.
No, okay. Okay, and any anyone have concerns with maintenance? No?
No, but to to describe what it would could potentially help to fund, right, in the pressure, so I mean, if you look at. The helpful buildings and grounds slide on Lauren's presentation, right, so it's like the capital improvement planning needs, the HVAC, soundproofing in this room. Which we can hear the rain, we might have, they were talking more. You know, the roof, um, you know, kind of, so these are, these are just kind of, you know.
Yeah.
Ex- extra top-up funding for future needs, and I I see additional needs. Um, and maybe even the playground as well, like, you know, the, it says potentially use bridgman for it, but funding, you know. For whatever that is, might be additional as well, so, but, yeah.
I mean, where are we on the work, it's been, it's been a little off, if you're talking about the. The, there's been issues with it before, I mean, like, and how it's doing life cycle wise.
They have been, um, we've been doing repairs to it, it it had a large overhaul before I got here, which is eight years ago. Right, nine, probably, right before, the year before I got here, it was already completed. Um, you know, flat roofs in New England are horrible. And so we, they had a horrible time today chasing stuff all over left and right.
Lots of holes in them, rainwater.
Including the SAU, um, with three different locations, um, so. Sh- short of changing it out and making a pitch, which is super duper expensive, we have to make sure infrastructure will support that, or should support flatly. Um, if you're eight years into a rehab, right? Um, we are addressing situations as they occur, I know Lantin was on site, I think they're on site here yesterday. Yesterday, yeah, not today, yeah, they were on site at SOE today. Um, so, you know, so we do repairs as issues occur, um. I don't know, it's part of the roofing plan really is going to hinge on. The capital improvement plan and our strategic plan on what we want to do moving forward with solarization, right? Because at that point in time, you know, we'll really need to make sure that. Whatever condition they're in, they're ready to accept an NRA, right? Um. So, so I mean, I don't think it's, I don't think what we're dealing with here is horrible. I think what we deal with here is often in the same location, which is frustrating for many, um. You know?
Is there any concerns with the dollar or not, Article seven?
So I can show you how much money the reserve is. Uh, the building maintenance reserve, um. It's going to be sitting at like two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, because remember, we had brought it down almost nothing when we did the tech project, we didn't bother. Um, and then our special education reserve is probably going to be sitting, depending on interest, it may go higher, I I go a little bit low. Um, uh, about three hundred and fifty-eight thousand by the end of this year. And again, um, maintenance about two seventy-seven.
I'm ready to move on.
Wait, did you get an answer to your question, you said, are people okay with the amounts?
Yeah, and no one said no.
But, so.
Yeah, good.
Well, I. I, I see this as like an overall, like right with the total.
Year.
Taxpayer layout this year. And and this Article seven also really gets into. Surplus beyond what we are currently anticipating, and I'm just kind of looking at a combination of. You know, kind of a CPI level increase this year. And if we have additional surplus, because I'm continuing to hear that we have surplus in staffing. In at the, you know, at the race school level, and I'm also looking at a pretty. Larger list of and projects that we kind of know going forward. And um, I'm looking at our, you know, total, you know, maintenance budget, some of these line items have been kind of. Relatively flat to actually lower than as far as our, it wasn't our general budget for maintenance is actually lower than we would have typically done last year. I'm just more inclined to kind of boost up the hundred thousand, I mean, even two hundred thousand, you know, just, and that's always up to, right? So it's not, you know, if we don't have two hundred thousand, then we're not going to take two hundred thousand, and this is all beyond the surplus, beyond the, you know, you know. Spending level we we had already committed to, so I just, I I feel like this might be a good year to um, to boost that. Aspect in maintenance.
Off, come on.
I would agree with Ken on it, because it, so what happened this year, right, we gave back one point seven million almost against taxation. And we retained as much as we were able to, um, so, you know. So it would have been great had we been able to change that right now, Chris, the law, but seeing as we're trending, you know, a little bit. We filled a few positions, but we haven't filled a lot. If we were going into the next fiscal year, I don't know that I would agree, right, with how much surplus we're going to come off of. But coming off of this fiscal year with the surplus, I think, and keep in mind, you have a, you have a safety net there, right? Because it says it's only money that's above what you're promising back against tax assessment. So it's, so it is an up to, if you don't have the two hundred, then you, whatever is left goes back.
Anyone have concerns with raising it to two hundred? Okay. Let's make that change.
Okay.
And also, Jamie, the very last sentence, uh, probably should be January twenty twenty-five, I think, right?
Oh, yes, right, critical failure.
And and just add Marcella.
Yes.
When you pick that one.
I should fix Dresden, and I don't know why I did not fix him, I'm terribly sorry, I'll actually pull it down and fix it, follow it back up.
I'm ready to move on, but Tony?
So I think one of the warrant articles says the board recommends approval of this, this creation. But I wonder if we could put the board position on all of the articles.
Uh, we will, and we will, yeah.
And then um. One of them has the effect on.
I'm going to put recommendations on all of them.
Mm-hmm. Um, it has the the budget implication in one of them, I believe. But I wonder if we added to.
What's involved, Maggie, tell me where you're at with that.
Um, Article one.
Yeah.
Has um, same statement as last year, this article's effect on the tax rate is negligible. But we don't have anything about the effect on the tax rate of any of the others. Like Article seven.
Yeah, that's a note that's been, I don't know why, it's been carried over year after year after year, we could probably.
So either strike it from the one or put it on all of them.
And then I'll allow you to put it on all of them, so we'll probably strike it from that one, I'm surprised the state hasn't come back and told us. The notes on the four and five have to be there because of their, um, because of their type of argument there.
Anything else? Thank you for that, members, let's move on down to where are they now? Now, business crying action. I take a motion to approve the expenditures, minutes, and all the signs. Yeah.
I move to approve items B through B by consent.
Seconded by Tony, uh, Kelly, are you there? Holly McConnell joined us virtually right after I said she wasn't here. Three seconds time to go. Right, so thank you, Kelly, I'll start with Ken.
Very, yes, Nelson, yes.
Kelly?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Did you say yes?
Hello? Can you hear me? But, oh, yes, you can hear me.
And E D S, it is unanimous, thank you. All right, moving on to report the chair, I'd like to thank Tara for doing an excellent job on that meeting that Kelly and I missed, I watched it today. It was awesome, and thank you so much, you're welcome, we'll be here. Easily spot. And the next meeting will be on, we're going to, remember in January, we have two weeks in a row, one specific to the hearing of budget adoption, the second will be our regular meeting, so. We'll see you after the holidays. And I did, I really enjoyed my, lots of travel time lately with Lauren and Jay, it was very surreal with our new capital, new friends in comfort. And that's all, say about that. Moving on to the committee little reports, we've heard a lot about budget today, any other updates, NHSBA, capital improvement committee, finance? Anyone? Nothing really, all right, we'll move right on to Jay's report.
And I will just reiterate what Lauren and Ben and I've already mentioned about the blue ribbon recognition at the state level. Uh, it's, it's, it really is a nice event each year, they recognize teacher of the year and some other awards as well. Um, and and uh, it was, it was nice for us to bask in a little bit of pride and the great job that all of our staff do to make the school such an excellent place to run. Um, the other thing I want to talk about, first, a big public apology to Jamie.
Oh, that's now.
So, uh, I've gone gone into great detail about how we make the snow day call year after year, and I've attached that as my written report, just the reiteration through the letter I submitted last year. This this morning, done it two or three times already this week.
Oh, my God, it's been every day.
Before five a.m., texting with our respective people, and we get, we get on the phone together and we we touch base around five this morning. And I went back and forth with the Vermont superintendent and the New Hampshire superintendent, and then promptly fell asleep, apparently, around five twenty-five. Five minutes before Jamie had to make the definitive call, which she did without me, thankfully. So I I want to just say sorry, it won't happen again, um, I've already been relegated to the guest room, I might, I might have to nap early. And I will be doing so again tonight, I think.
Oh, hopefully not.
So, uh, so just want to remind everybody, a lot goes into it, we don't make these decisions lightly. Uh, whether we call it a snow day or decide not to, it's it's usually, and 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 we're doing it more and more in concert with. Um, other leaders in the region who are who are talking to their own road crews and making that decision as informed as possible. Um, and that letter is attached, and again, we we welcome feedback, but I addressed the whole feedback loop in the letter, so. Um, so we do the best we can.
Will the review of this letter be going out to the families?
Yes, I will be sending it out again, I I made mention of it, I think, in the last newsletter, but I'll go in greater detail and just re-re-send up the letter.
Send it out for a couple of minutes.
There is, there is a line that says bear in mind.
It's only January.
That it's only January.
It's last year's letter.
It's last year's letter, yeah, so I just wouldn't.
When I send it, I'll keep it just the way it is, and I'll send it out the same, this is last year's letter, hasn't changed.
We're appreciating what hours of the day. He's getting, he's getting enough sleep.
Yeah, you were working late last night, speaking, which.
It's all good. All right, um, anything else, Jay?
Nope, that's it.
All right, well, thank you very much for that, let's see, Robin with us then.
Hello. So I've submitted my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Anybody have any questions for Robin?
About this?
Yeah, about her um, report or anything else.
I was going to ask her about the Taylor Swift concert, but.
Um, that might be important.
Lots of fun.
And in specific to. See, none, all right, thank you for the report, Robin, we appreciate it.
You're welcome. See you.
Jamie, anything on top of what we already talked about today?
Um.
I hear you talked a few times today.
Not really, other than to thank our road crews and Hannah Rendo, which have been really on the ball this year, answering our calls straight away, promptly, so it's very helpful. Um, thank you to the parents even who were emailing me and wanting me to know what their. Um, thank you to the parents even who were emailing me and wanting me to know what their conditions are in their area. Cause I, I do forward it to the road crews.
Thank you, now we appreciate that. As such, we also extend our thanks to all the parties involved. Um, that's it, we do have multiple needs for non-public tonight. And the specific reasons are there's a personnel issue and then a contractual issue, which was the. I see for personal matter, yeah, and. Is there one else? See her in the room? I think we're saving A or C. Yeah. All right, a big motion for, so you can say A and C, we appreciate it. All right, second by, okay, then we have to go around the board one more time, starting with Kim.
Partman, yes.
Very, yes.
Nelson, yes.
Kelly? Right, Kelly's not with us. All right, and my son, yes. All right, it's going to non-public, I will try and follow another wall. And you had my one figure of you.
And we're back and thank you for everyone. As we go to the agenda review, we did add a vote regarding a negotiation agreement that may be happen at a meeting right now.
Move to approve the tentative agreement with the hammer support that association has presented.
Seconded by Tara and we did lose Kelly due to connectivity issues so do all of us in favor. It is unanimous five zero. Thank you all. And then second act to the public to address.
Seconded by Tara and we did lose Kelly due to activity issues, so we do all those in favor. It is unanimous five zero. Thank you all. And then second I'd like to the public to address the board. There's no one here or on lines. We'll move on. So many items you have for the agenda for the next meeting. Remember there are two separate January meetings. The first one is specific to the public agreement, but adoption and January eighth. So if I'll take motion to adjourn.
I moved to adjourn at nine thirty five P M.
Okay, seconded by Kim. Starting with Kim.